Call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, May 11th, 2021.
That's the best we got.
Okay, go ahead and let's try a roll call.
Okay. I'll try to talk really loud.
Perfect.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Beck? Knop?
Here.
Chantet? Chantet? I know I saw him on here, didn't I? Yes, not. Okay. Um. Baron?
Yeah.
Wolf?
Here.
Solfah?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ahazi?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
And Vogel Singer?
Here.
We have 12 in attendance.
Okay, thank you. Reminder to please speak directly into your microphone, especially important tonight if you are online because we're having a little difficulty here. Item number three would be items to be removed, added, or changed. Do we have anything tonight? No, no changes or anything to the, okay. Up next will be item number four, which is matters from the public, or anything not on the agenda. Do we have anybody else online? No hands waving. I see Dan Chantet is here. Dan, are you here?
Hi there.
Okay, so now we have 13 out of 14. And Alderman Beck did send me a message before the meeting that she's probably gonna be late. Okay, hearing nothing from the public, we will move on then to the consent agenda. Alderman Chantet, you wanna take that?
I do actually have some trouble pulling up a window, I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem, I'll take it, Dan, then. The only thing on the consent agenda tonight is Resolution 21-49-R, requesting a permit from IDOT for the closure of various roadways for the BHS Homecoming Parade Special Event. If there's no questions, I'll make the motion that we recommend to council Resolution 21-049-R in the form of the consent agenda. A motion by Wolf, second by Baron. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Oh, there it is. It works.
We fixed it.
I'll stop shouting.
Okay, we need to turn the volume down first. Go ahead.
Okay. Is that good?
Yeah.
Lehman?
Not so close.
Aye.
Ahazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Stop yelling at me. Aye, aye.
Vogel Singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck? Knop?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
And Baron?
Aye.
Okay.
I heard 12 is not here?
Yes, aye.
Oh, good, now I hear you. Thank you. Now we have 13. 13 is zero.
Okay. We're gonna try and do a little sound adjustment here before we go any further. Ready, Mark? Go ahead and talk, Jenny.
Testing, one, two, three, testing. Testing. Testing.
That's better. Just a little tiny bit up. Yeah, just go up just a little bit, Mark. Okay, test again.
Testing, one, two, three.
Awesome, there we go. All right, now we will move on to item number six, which is a motion to approval of bids for parcels one and two of the old railroad parcels on South Bernadette Lane. This is something that we had bid openings for a week ago? Two weeks ago? Regardless, those were two pieces of property of several that we have sold in the past. Scott, you wanna take this one?
Sure, yeah, I'd be glad to. So, we had advertised for five parcels that are south of Bernadette Lane for sale, and they're west of Brandywine. They're basically old railroad parcels that we acquired in the 80s. And these are declared surplus. So of the five parcels, we actually received bids only on two of the five parcels. And these are two of the ones that are the most isolated, so that's, that's actually a good thing, because these are completely landlocked, not attached to anything else. So we received a bid for the Northern Mars Parcel, which is parcel one, of $1,001 by Daniel Moker, who is an adjacent property owner at 908 Bernadette Lane. And we received a bid for parcel two, which is, was for $50, which is from Gene Porter of 1210 Brandywine Circle, who also is an adjacent property owner. So we, because of the way that we advertise these for bid, was a multiple day advertisement in the newspaper, so we can accept essentially any bid for these parcels. They really have no use for us other than existing utilities, and that we would reserve a range of utility easement over that. And then in order to sell these, we have to accept the bids by a three-quarters vote of the corporate authorities.
Okay. I have one question, or actually two questions, I think, Scott. 1210 is actually the house or the lot just to the north of that?
Yes.
So that is, in effect, make an L-shaped lot. Did they already buy the other parcel previous?
Yes, they did. They bought that when the railroad originally was selling it years ago, so.
Because I noticed it looks like there's an accessory structure or a shed on that property.
Yes.
Is that in the right-of-way that we have, or the?
It is.
It is, and they're aware of that, and they know that that would have to be moved if we ever have to.
No, that, actually, that, because the, it's, it's a railroad right-of-way, it's treated a little differently, and actually that was built before we annexed that also. So that was something that happened prior to annexation.
That's just what I wanted to make sure, so that we didn't get into a situation where they buy the piece of property next to it, and then have to tear down or move their shed, because it would be in the way. That's just what I'm sure that they weren't gonna do.
No, it's.
Incur any cost for that, or have any issues with that. Okay.
Right, they can keep it there.
Is that overhead lines in that area?
Is it what?
Is that an overhead line in that area?
Correct. Yes, it is. And it's a commed, it's a shared commed and city line.
Okay. All right, that's the only question I have. Anybody else have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I don't see where 908 is for parcel one. I mean, is it, it says it's adjacent, but which property is it?
It would be north of that, it's actually not on the map, because what you're seeing is Brandywine Circle there.
Yep.
So about where it says Web App Builder up top of that.
Oh, so it's gonna be right below it, right above it.
Yeah, again, make another L-shaped lot.
Yep.
But that would be just to the, I would imagine it's gonna be one parcel east of that.
Yeah, they own, they own the railroad strip that is west of their parcel on Bernadette also, so this is directly south of that piece. So they would have, you know, an extended piece down. We did send letters to all the adjacent owners, giving them the opportunity to bid on these, and these were the only two bids we received, even though we sent to all the adjacent property owners.
I guess now that I see that, I might have a third question. How does these properties, when now with those little like flag shapes coming off of them, how is that parcel, if they wanna put a shed or a storage building or something on that, how does that work with the setbacks and everything? Is that an issue?
Yeah, in most cases, accessory structures have a pretty minimal setback of either three or five feet, so it shouldn't create a problem. They could, you know, potentially put a shed or accessory structure back there if they wanted to.
Okay, because that's what I would imagine that they would wanna do with those properties being the way they're shaped and location of the rest of their property.
Right, exactly.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, if not, I'll make a motion that we approve the bids for parcels one and two of the old railroad parcels south of Bernadette Lane.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Knop. Roll call, please.
Could I kindly ask if I'm mispronouncing any new alderman last names? I'd hate to go through the whole meeting doing that.
Sure, so this is Alderman Ayazi instead of Ahazi?
Ayazi, perfect, thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Nope? Good. Okay. Let me... Sorry about that, Mr. Ayazi.
No problem.
Okay, let's see here. We have Wolf?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogel Singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck? Knop?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
And Baron?
Aye.
Motion carried, 13 is zero.
All right, thank you. Next up would be item number seven, which is Resolution 21-47-R, approving an intergovernmental master agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for state-maintained traffic signals. Alderman Rosado?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, Resolution 2147-R and 2148-R go hand in hand. 10 years ago, we had one single agreement that was modified to encompass both state and local maintenance of the traffic signals. Now IDOT requires that a second agreement be executed for state and local maintained traffic signals, instead of one single agreement for both. So Resolution 2147-R is an intergovernmental master agreement for state-maintained traffic signals, and Resolution 2148-R is an intergovernmental master agreement for local maintenance of traffic signals. The maintenance agreements explain the maintenance costs and the share of responsibility for the traffic signals. So I think I have that right, Gary?
I do, same.
Okay.
Perfect.
Any other comments?
Just the key document in both of these agreements is Exhibit A. Exhibit A outlines the percent of maintenance responsibility, as well as the percent of energy charges. And all the rest of the information you just stated was spot on, so I really don't have any more to add.
Gary, I have one question. Yeah. I didn't see anything in here about timing of the lights, or any requests, or timeframes for review of timing of the lights. Is that all separate compared to this maintenance?
So we've had those conversations with IDOT, especially in the context of the new signal that is gonna be installed at Prairie and Wilson. Tossing aside the Prairie Street signal for a second. Been about 18 months, we approached IDOT about the timing of the Wilson Street interconnect. And that was last done and brought online in roughly around 2014. And it's IDOT standard practice to do it every 10 years, so they would look at it again in 2024. If the city desired to look at it before then, the cost would be on us. Now that we have Prairie Street in the mix, we have not really gotten to the bottom of that answer yet, but we are pushing hard to try and get them to relook at the interconnect because we added something new, which was really part of their project. So today I don't have an answer for you, but we're pressing to try and get them to look at the whole system when Prairie Street comes online.
Yeah, and I guess one thing I'd like to see is when they do go through that process, if there's a way that we can be part of that, because I think that there are times during the year, schools, non-school times of the year, when it really might make sense to have, you know, and I'm sure that they'd wanna do a traffic study to figure this out, but it might make sense to have different timings for those lights. For the schools, schools, you know, year and non-school time of the year.
2014 was before I took over the engineering division, so the engineering division at that time was the people who coordinated with IDOT. So there is coordination, and Rahats on top of it.
Okay.
Yes, and I, we echo your sentiments, and we also frankly observing how South Shumway and how Houston Island work, we would like to discourage a lot of the people who are trying to get around the lights. And that actually kind of causes more chaos, so we, we, there's a traffic signal timing issue.
Okay, because, you know, I just wanna make sure that whatever we have to do to try to get them to do that, and, you know, maybe even after that's done, see if there's any way that, you know, because we're adding a new traffic signal to the mix, can we go back in a year or two and review it, and see if it still works the way it was designed when it was put together?
So we're in phase, remember, we're in phase two design right now. We're really in the design phase of Prairie and Wilson. That's why I don't have an answer for you today as to what the answer is yet. But what, what will happen is when it is reviewed, then we'll go back on IDOT's 10-year clock.
Okay.
So if we wanna review it again in a couple of years, when we looked into the cost, the cost was a six-figure cost, because it's a comprehensive traffic study. So I don't, I don't know that unless you really want to, we could review it in a couple of years, but it'd be on us, so.
Okay.
That's why we're pressing to get it done in 2022, as opposed to waiting until 2024.
Okay. Okay. Well, we'll accept that.
Any, any other discussion? Okay, would anybody like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2147-R, approving an intergovernmental master agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for state-maintained traffic signals?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion made by Nick Serone, second by Mark Uwer. Jennifer, roll call.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogel Singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck? Knop?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
And Uwer?
Aye.
Motion carried, 13 is zero.
Okay, I'll just let you take the next one, like you.
Then on number eight, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2148-R, approving an intergovernmental master agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for governmental body maintenance of traffic control devices.
Second. First by Rosado, second by Knop. Roll call.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck? Knop?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogel Singer?
Aye.
And Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried, 13 is zero.
All right, thank you. Up next will be Resolution 21-50-R, authorizing dynamic ratings incorporated to provide and perform monitoring equipment installation at the Paramount Substation and Main Substation for an amount not to exceed $139,328. Alderman Serone?
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. The exciting thing is one of the sensors for this monitor is a Morgan Schaefer Callisto II dissolved gas analyzer.
That is exciting.
Which is pretty cool. I don't know, I don't think Rahat's on. I don't know if Gary wanted to chime in on any of this, but it.
It's really the next generation of sensors for these transformers which last for decades. And as Alderman Wolf introduced, it's for the Paramount Substation, which is currently under reconstruction right now. And for the Main Substation, which is a substation just to the south here on South Shumway. And we'll only have one last transformer, and that'll be the McKee Transformer, which potentially could be later this year or into early 2022.
Okay, those were my questions. Now, any, anything new, any new transformer comes with the sensors already on them, right? So these are older transformers?
These are older transformers that we're retrofitting with new, new, new devices. That's correct.
No, the, the monitors you said were last decades, but how about the transformers?
Maybe I said that in reverse.
Maybe I heard it in reverse.
The monitor, that's why we upgrade the monitors as life goes on, so.
Okay, and how long will these sensors last?
I honestly don't know, but it's, it's like going from a 486 computer to the, you know, Pentium processor to now the whatever they are now, the i5. That's what we're doing. And I honestly don't, I honestly don't know, like, will this be 10 years or 20 years?
Right.
I, I, it's in the decade range. It's not two years from now, we're gonna be back to you with something new.
Then, just a couple of other questions. The, there's still one left to do. Why didn't we bundle that? Was it a budgetary thing?
Just a budgetary thing.
Okay.
A timing thing.
And then is there not a bid process? Is this the only company that does this?
Yeah, that's, that's where, and for everyone's benefit, that's where the electric utility gets to be a little unique compared to a lot of the other city services. There are not, unlike a paving contractor, where there may be, you know, a half dozen paving contractors who will come in and bid on your job, because you're just doing asphalt payment. Electric infrastructure is a very specialized field, and especially if you get into monitoring equipment. Number one, monitoring equipment that we want to remain consistent across all of our system. So you've really narrowed the funnel at that point, and, and, and so yes, we normally there's a lot of times in electric where we get down to one vendor, and that's, that is what it is, and we kind of make sure that that vendor is consistent in their pricing from year to year, project to project.
And it was in this year's budget, was it within?
Yes, we have $140,000 in this year's budget.
Perfect. Okay, anybody else have any questions? Mark?
Gary, if you'd be so kind as to ease any fears to the public, to explain the fact that these are not directly connected to the internet, given recent ransomware against gas lines?
Yeah, that is true. In fact, this, the entire electric infrastructure is not connected to the outside world, so we are behind a couple of series of firewalls. We don't have any reason to be on the internet with our electric utilities, so it is contained within internally.
Yeah, thank you. It's just an important thing. I think people see those stories, and they get very nervous, especially since we are in control of all those things. It's good to see that we set up our systems in a responsible way to prevent such attack.
And we, we do not have, you, if you're on outside, you cannot get into the electric utility, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Great question. Anybody else?
I was gonna say that, because I think for those of us that were out there for the tour when we went through that substation, that was one of the big boxes that's on the side of the transformer outside.
That's correct.
And, you know, the, the main thing with this is, this is really a monitor to make sure that we don't have disasters happen. You know, that this kind of gives us an idea of as things degrade in the transformers, or if things take a turn for the worse, this monitors for things that would give you an early warning signal, so that you would know that this transformer has problems, or that transformer has problems, so you can take care of that before it destroys it. I think without that, I think we'd be really just looking at, okay, this is gonna be the end of the life of the transformer, we're gonna change it, and probably would end up costing us a lot more money had we gone that route. So I think this is really a good, you know, safe preventative thing that we do with these to make sure that the system is more reliable.
Yeah, this is a $70,000 device that is protecting and monitoring a million-dollar device.
Right.
Anybody else? With that, I will make a motion to approve Resolution 21-050-R, authorizing Dynamic Ratings, Inc. to provide and perform monitoring equipment installation at Paramount Substation and Main Substation for an amount not to exceed $139,328.
Second. Miller?
Motion by Serone, second by Miller. Roll call, please.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogel Singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
And Uwer?
Aye.
Motion carried, 14 is zero.
With the record reflected, Alderman Beck joined the meeting at 7:25. Okay, next would be item number 10, which is a discussion of off-street parking regulations. And, Scott, do you wanna start that off, or how are we doing this one tonight?
Yeah, this is a request from the council to look at off-street parking regulations, and in particular, the downtown parking numbers, as well as parking maximums in our general commercial district, which is primarily the areas along Randall Road. So we were asked to look at some of these, and look at some comparisons in the literature, as well as other ordinances, and see what's out there. Drew Rackow from my staff did an excellent job of preparing a memorandum for this. He is on tonight, and I'll let him take the lion's share of that responsibility and credit for the work that he did on this.
Thank you, Scott. Yes, so this has kind of been a part of the committee's discussion off and on for the past year or so. In the memo, I did identify a couple of different sources of, or discussions of parking, or parking issues within the comp plan and the, our downtown street scape framework plan. Just where we've talked about parking issues, and kind of the priority of downtown, and appearance of downtown of parking, and where it goes, and who provides it, and so forth. I did identify in the report a couple of ways that the current zoning code does handle parking. And it is kind of similar to what we found with some of the other municipalities. In, in that, the zoning code essentially allows for a change of use between different types of zoning uses. So if you have a space that currently is an office, and you wanna put in a restaurant, you're able to do that under the current zoning code, without providing additional parking on your, your property. Now, when it comes to, when you build an addition, or build a new building, you are required for more than four units on a property, you are required to provide the required parking. The other item that the current code has is a provision, basically, to allow shared parking. Though, as I noted, we really don't have anyone that has formally used that for the zoning, being zoning requirements. As Scott mentioned, we did do a survey of some other, of our neighboring communities, as well as some other communities in the area, just to get a sense of what other municipalities have done. Those that have had some sort of provision for their downtown areas have language similar to what we have. However, there are some differences. Namely, some municipalities do allow for additional building space, whether through an addition, or new residence, or new building, to not have to provide their own required parking. However, some of those communities also use a fee in lieu for, for that. So we do have a discussion about fee in lieu in the memo. Rather than go through those, each of those examples, I did want to discuss kind of some of the thoughts we, as a staff, have had so far with this issue, and would look for additional comments from the committee tonight regarding those. But essentially, what we thought would be a possible solution to some of the parking desires to improve parking in downtown area would be to modify this Section 4.203I, and essentially allow for additions and new buildings with four fewer residential units, or non-commercial buildings, to provide a fee in lieu. Now, fee in lieu kind of for parking varies greatly within the region. It started, it seems for the most part, in the North Shore and North Lakefront areas. And the fees vary, and that usually has been commiserate with the cost, or true cost, of providing a parking space in a deck, or other improvement. So, and as I said, the fees vary, and that is something if the council is interested in using that concept, it would probably be something we would have to evaluate those figures further. But they range from $1,000 in Tim Lee Park to $24,000, I believe is the highest we found. And that was in Skokie after a credit for the first, or a reduced price for the first five spaces. Um, in the memo, I did talk about how, uh, there is kind of a, uh, you know, the, the cost, you know, uh, if it's set at a rate that provides for the true value of parking, it might be higher. Uh, there might be reasons to lower that cost, uh, but ultimately, um, somebody does have to shoulder that cost of constructing that parking if, if that is a, uh, an option that, uh, we want to implement in, in our downtown. Um, about the matter of, uh, parking maximums, um, our research so far has not found too many local examples of, uh, zoning parking maximums. Uh, so, uh, but, uh, this, this topic, I know is, um, is certainly, uh, been growing in discussion. Uh, we did have the, uh, National Planning Conference online last week and a number of sessions did mention, uh, parking maximums as something that a lot of places are investigating now. Uh, and, uh, so it is a, and something we might be able to find some other examples of, uh, but, uh, we were suggesting, uh, as an, uh, initial thought, a maximum, maximum based on our minimum parking requirements of, uh, a range between 110 and 150%. Uh, so, uh, with exempting certain uses, that probably will be a higher demand, uh, use. So, um, that's kind of the, uh, initial discussion. Uh, I also mentioned in the report, um, the, uh, we may want to discuss reviewing our multifamily resident requirements, uh, for parking, uh, for the downtown area. Uh, that did seem, uh, based on some of the examples, we did find, uh, is a bit higher and we do feel it is a bit high, uh, for that type of use. So that might be another avenue to discuss, but, uh, there are really no alternatives tonight. It's just a, we're just bringing this to you for the discussion. Uh, and if, uh, you do, the commission or county committee does feel that, uh, there is a, a need for a change to our code for these items, uh, if you do request we initiate a text amendment, that would be the next step. Abby?
Abby, I'm sure you have something to say about this.
Um, I, I have a couple of questions and comments in no particular order and thank you so much to, to Scott and Drew for putting this together and doing all the reading.
I could barely hear Abby. Can she speak in the mic more?
Is that better? Angled more?
A little bit better. Yeah, thanks.
Um, thank you. That was what I really all said so far was thank you. Um, so, uh, just to clarify, so this was only covering the downtown mixed use. Um, does not cover residential, does not cover general commercial, correct?
In terms of the, uh, parking maximum, uh, we-
The parking minimum or?
Okay. Um, we, in terms of, uh, what we're proposing right now, it would just be for the downtown mixed use district. It would be using that same, uh, language we have, uh, about, that gives some additional, uh, wiggle room for the downtown. So that's, uh, where we started as a starting point.
Okay. Um, I saw your note in there and I would agree. I, I kind of, I like the idea of the fee in lieu of, um, on the lower end to support future parking infrastructure, but, um, your comment in there about, you know, a developer saying, well, what's your plan? What's your plan for future infrastructure? And we don't really have that outlined yet, but I can see that being, um, a sticking point for some folks. And what were my other questions? Uh, this is just a random question as, as I was going through this and seeing the different notes about, um, bike parking and the requirements that you came across in other cities like Champaign, um, that either require bike parking or let you do bike parking in lieu of parking spots as, as that trade-off. Um, was there anything that stuck out that, you know, we could adopt here as well for our downtown?
Uh, well, we do have a, uh, a bike parking requirement, uh, based on the number of automobile spaces for all uses. Uh, so that is something that is, is currently in the code and we do apply. Um, in terms of trade-off or, you know, in lieu of, uh, automobile parking, I didn't see any examples of that, but that might be something that, um, might require a deeper dig of, uh, or, or asking around for examples. Um, but, uh, this, in terms of, um, to have a, a different requirement. Uh, but like I said, the, the current requirement is, is based on the, the minimum number of auto spaces. Uh, and I believe it's under, under, if your use requires under 30 spaces, uh, you're only required to provide two bicycle parking spaces. Uh, but if you're over 30, it's based on a formula based on that total number of spaces.
Um, I-
Okay.
Yeah, hold my other ones. Go ahead.
You know, I, I really think that this is something that we've kind of kicked around for a while that we really need to make somewhat of a decision on where we'd like to go with this because I think, you know, we're going to have one development start hopefully very shortly. And then I think we're going to see several more within the next couple of years. So I think this is something we need to think about, especially for some of these, you know, what I, I'll say is like downtown infill developments. Where you've got a bunch of smaller areas where, you know, somebody wants to come in and take one old house down and then put up a building or they've got an empty lot that's in between two buildings downtown that they want to put small, you know, multi-story building on and probably will have some residential component in it on, you know, upper floors that I think we need to have. I don't, I don't want to, I guess I'm going to use the word progressive view towards how we want to set those up and how we want to require parking for those, you know, and I really feel like, you know, if we have ways to get those, uh, an incentive to somebody to build a building with that residential component in or with that multi-use component in it downtown, we have to have different standards for the parking requirements or it's just not going to happen. You know, if we go-
Yeah, I think one of the things that we, we've noted is, is our multifamily standards are very, um, tough. I guess you could say, you know, we require quite a bit of parking for, for our downtown multifamily buildings. And, uh, you know, if we, if we didn't go through variances, um, or deviations from the code, um, that we would see them asking for anyway. So, um, you, I, I think, I think we would look at this twofold. One is, is we do think that, you know, maybe we should look at our standards generally for, uh, the downtown multifamily just overall. But then if we get a developer that comes in here and says, well, you know, we think based on our estimates, we're only going to need X number of, you know, parking spaces per unit, they could always incorporate that into a planned development or variance that they would ask as part of their development approvals. Most likely it's a planned development for most things that are being built in downtown anyway. So that could just be wrapped into that as well.
Okay. And then, and that was going to be one of my things is do we need to do this as a blanket for all of it? Or can we do it on development at one at a time? And if we can do it that way, you know, I think we still have to have some change in what we have out there.
Yeah, I think, I think what we're thinking is that if we change the numbers just generally for the multifamily buildings in downtown, um, that will help quite a bit, um, and then would probably actually reduce the number of deviations developers might ask for in the future. But, uh, at least from that standpoint, we, we do feel that our numbers are pretty, um, restrictive, uh, right now compared to other, other communities. And so I think that's something we definitely could look at.
Okay. Mark?
I was actually a little surprised Abby didn't say this. Um, do we want to lean way for, way forward and say no parking minimums? And then have the developers say, well, here's how many we think we need, whereas, and they would have, there has to be some proof to it. You can't, somebody's not going to build a 300, uh, person apartment and then just say, yeah, we don't need any. There's plenty of parking in there. It'd have to show evidence that it can park itself. And that includes as you start to, frankly, I think it's citywide because as you do things out in the, uh, on Randall Road and somebody wants to, if, uh, Target wants to build in their outlot and they can prove that they don't need that many parking spots anymore, then why have them all? And that's obviously, there's a lot of parking out there and transportation, retail, everything's changing. This, the past 14 months have changed things up. Are they going to go back to normal? Probably not. In the retail side, it's not going back to the way it was. Can guarantee you that. Um-
I wouldn't be surprised if those box stores out there, Jewel, Target, the other, you know, stores like that may be coming in and looking for drive-throughs.
You, yeah, you may have-
You know, to be able to improve their, their ability to, to have the drive-up service that they've kind of become accustomed to now. That might be something we might see.
And, uh, but if you, we still have the, the say that we can be like, well, no, it's, you know, 10 spots for your office building that seats 400 people isn't going to work, but there's, I don't know exactly how that's done and how you, where you put those teeth in, but I know it is something that is happening across the country.
Yeah, I think one of the things to look at is the, is the parking, um, maximums that we're talking about. If we set a percentage and let's say, you know, you know, whatever, whatever percentage we want to set at, if somebody wants to go beyond that, then we can do that as either a variance or a conditional use or something to that effect so that they have to get specific approval. So if you get, you know, uh, Mariano's or whoever, you know, that, that is a big box retailer and says, well, I absolutely need to have 700 parking spaces. And we can say, well, no, you can only have X number per our code. If they want to go beyond that, then they would have to make a specific request and the city council would have to approve of that.
Yeah, because I think honestly, anything we can do, both in downtown and the commercial areas to create some density will benefit us into the future. I mean, the, the years of, you know, the acreage out in front of the, the square footage of a store just is not going to keep, you know, going. It's not sustainable. And I think that's definitely going to be a change we're going to deal with. So I think Scott's right is, you know, we say, okay, that size store, you know, for retail normally gets 200 parking spaces. You say you want 300. Show us numbers of why that has to be that way.
Abby?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, you, you're right. I, I would be in support of, uh, of just doing a blanket, reducing, removing of the minimums across the board, across the city for all uses. Um, and, you know, to your example, the, the 400-person office building, you would hope, you know, right now, in the situation that we're in and the city that we have, nobody's going to put 10 spots. Like they will know their own market well enough to know, I'm not getting customers. I'm not, employees are going to be annoyed. Um, there's not the availability of that many nearby that the market will drive what they need. But having a maximum in place, I also would hope that the, that development has turned enough that big boxes are not looking at the day after Thanksgiving and saying, that's what I need for parking for now into the future and having these giant wasted spaces. But, um, yeah, I mean, I'm just-
Lesson learned. They've learned their lesson.
Yeah, we know that, you know, per square foot, our downtown and on, and on Randall Road, you know, our, our, our tax base and all the money we have to budget with at the end of the year is based on productive uses and the parking and the, oh my gosh. Scott, that, Drew, that yellow map that you put at the end, I've never seen that one before. That's striking. So thank you for including that. I mean-
Usually those were, street was one color and parking was another. So it didn't look as-
As bad.
As crazy as it is.
I mean, that's, it, that's going to be our struggle and Randall Road looks like that too. I mean, that's, that's where our tax base is struggling the most. And so anything we can do to fill that in with something that's going to help us at budget season is great.
Well, the thing I thought about when I started looking at this and I looked at that map, I thought about, okay, every Saturday during the summer, how many thousands of people do we have come down to North River Street for that? And yet you can still find a parking space. It might be a block away, it might be two blocks away, but you can always find a parking space.
Yep.
When you've got, you know, 2,000 people at 10 or 11 AM in the morning that are down here, where's everybody parked? I know everybody's not parking down here and that's part of, I think, by design. We want people down here, but we're not going to say, hey, we're going to build a field of parking, you know, blocks and blocks and blocks long to accommodate that one day of the week.
Right.
But what's there can work. So, I mean, that's, I think, got to be the attitude moving forward is, is that's what the developers have to think about. Is that if there's a real good reason to be there, people are going to come there regardless of whether you got parking directly in front of the door. I mean, I, the one that was amazing to me was when we went through all of what we did with Walgreens. Literally Walgreens would not okay any plan that didn't have, I think it was 11 or 12 spaces within 75 feet of their door. The front door. I mean, it was just crazy how they had to have that, but yet I'd say 20 or 30% of the time I pass Walgreens, those spaces are all full. So, I mean, they know what they need and that's what I think is, is what happens with this is the people that want to build these buildings know what they require. And I think as they've learned over time for multi-use buildings in downtown, they don't have to have the parking immediately in front of the door.
As I agree in the downtown, um, one area where I would have some concern is in the industrial. So that, um, if a, uh, developer was building a building for a particular use, which was not, um, labor intensive. So for instance, it was a manufacturer that had a, a tremendous amount of automation in their operations. Um, I would worry that if they built too little parking, then that would lead to a long-term vacancy because it isn't, um, adaptable to as many other uses for other manufacturers.
Yeah, that's a balance issue that we always have because you, you get, you know, some of these developers will build it for, uh, an industrial or storage use, but then later it gets converted to say recreational use and that has a much higher parking demand. And then those people end up parking on the streets or if the street's too narrow, they have to try and park on the neighbor's property or what have you. So I've, I've seen that that, that does become a functional problem. And so that, that is a balance of, of trying to figure out, you know, what's, what's that, you know, perfect number, uh, to, to work with, with some of those properties. So, um, I don't think it's zero. Uh, I don't think it's 10,000. Um, it's somewhere in between.
Do you think our streets in our industrial area are too narrow to accommodate street parking in the-
In many cases, yes.
Yeah.
Especially the older, especially the older ones. And when you look at trucks that are trying to maneuver.
Yeah.
Um, you know, when we have any trucks parked, we've had to actually restrict parking for trucks on some of our industrial streets just because of that, because it's creates a, a log jam you can't get through.
You can't make the turn, the turn radius on a 5053 truck is not conducive on some of the streets we have out there.
Yeah, Douglas, for example, before we had that industrial building, that newest one, uh, just west of Kirk, that was kind of our truck staging area. And then when that building went in, we had to make that go away because there just wasn't room for passing with trucks parking on the street there. So most of our industrial streets are, are too narrow.
And it's fun to drive by when there's like two right next to each other.
No, it's not.
Exciting. Watch your mirrors be this far apart.
I have a daughter that lost a mirror on that street, so.
Mine might.
Just waiting to get through and somebody came by and took the mirror outside of her car.
If I, if I may make a suggestion, and I think, you know, I understand what, what Abby's, you know, looking to do, but I think, I think, you know, perhaps we start out with the downtown area and, and the maximums for the general commercial and then come back and see how that goes. And if it's not a problem, we can always revisit it and, um, you know, propose additional changes. So, um, I think, I think, you know, trying to do this, you know, initially, I think is, is a good first step. And then we can, you know, see how it is in practice. It's sort of like the one Washington building. We, we built the Larson Becker parking lot as, as, as our backstop for that building because we don't have any technical parking required for that building. Um, so we wanted to see how that goes. And until that gets built, that was kind of why we wanted to keep the Larson Becker lot in place. So, um, some of these things are, you know, experiments and see how it goes. And if it works great, then, then, uh, we can continue and, and propose things to, in different parts of town for different standards.
Yeah, I, I'd kind of be nervous about taking away a parking minimum, minimums, especially for the industrial areas. You know, because I don't know, you know, in the next five years, I think it's going to be really important for us to try to draw on as much industrial expansion as we can out there as we have property for. And if we have no minimums out there, I think that makes it again, very hard to reuse any building that gets built with a very small amount of parking.
But again, we're not, I, I mean, unless we put a maximum on there, we're not restricting them to not building parking. We're just not telling them they have to build a certain amount.
Right, but then you lose the actual physical space on the property. If they build a building that can be maximized by warehousing space, but then if it wanted to be turned into manufacturing space and it needed a workforce of 50 people and, you know, for three shifts and they needed to have parking, you don't have a place to put the parking then. That's the only, that's, that's one of the big concerns I have with the industrial side of it.
But is that a market-driven, private thing that we're not really in the business of controlling anyway?
Well, here, here's a good example. If we have an industrial building that has a parking lot already and then we get a landlord that says, you know what, I want to maximize my space and forget the parking, the employees can deal with it on their own. He could sell off his parking lot and then have somebody else build a building with no parking. And so you have no parking for the existing building and then no parking for the other building. So where do those people go? And he's going to look at it and say, I don't care. I'm, I'm just making money off it. So-
That was my point earlier. There still needs to be teeth that we can prevent that from happening. You, you wouldn't, it can't just be, everybody builds everything with zero parking spaces because that obviously doesn't work either.
Right.
It's all dependent. And so that, that would be my challenge to, Drew, you and Scott, is to say, well- Scott, is to say, well, how do you put teeth into something to prevent somebody doing something that is just logically won't work, where they would have to prove that, yep, I can sell this parking lot and I don't need any parking because my building is run 100% by robots and I only need one parking lot spot for the one guy that's going to make sure the robots don't start a war.
Right. Well, I think, I think, you know, we do have a mechanism in our code right now where if somebody wanted to do that, they could get a variance. You know, they could say, you know what, this, this building is a, is a data center and we only need three parking spaces. So, you know, they could, they could ask for a variance, say, we only need to put in three, and then they could sell off the rest of the land if that could be redeveloped. So we, we do have a relief valve in the form of variance process.
And I think that, to me, would be the way to leave it in the commercial or in the industrial areas, leave it with that as the relief for it. But also, if we change and get rid of the, the minimums and maybe into a maximum in some of the areas like downtown and other places, that then we also have a place there where, you know, I'm going to build this and it's going to be pure residential. And I really think the way I build these and the units I have in them, I need to have two parking spaces per unit. And they can come back to us and say, hey, you know, you're only saying I need to have one there, or maximum would be one on this, I need to have two. Here's the reasons why. And then they could convince us that, why they need the variance the other way.
Right, right, right.
So I, I mean, I guess to me, what I would like us to see us do is what Drew has in here is how to reduce it. And when we do reduce that or get rid of the minimums, how do we add some mechanism in there if we want to achieve a parking lot or parking fee, you know, in lieu of fee, how are we going to use that? I mean, that's something else that makes a great sense. If I was going to go in and somebody says to me, okay, you're going to have to pay me, you know, $150,000 to put that building up if you don't want to have this much parking there, I'm going to ask what you're going to do with it. You know, where is that going to get used at? Or is that just going to sit there, you know, for 25 years till you have enough to build a parking garage? That doesn't ever benefit my building.
Right.
Or benefit any part of the town.
And I think we have a discussion with regard to sidewalk fees, right?
Mm-hmm. And that was always the, that was always the
And now we've solved that.
Yeah.
We put it toward our annual sidewalk program. We'll build a sidewalk somewhere else and eventually we'll get to that area of town where that sidewalk would have gone. And so, yes, we would identify when we do the payment in lieu of spaces, what project that that is going to be applied to in the future.
And that could be
And the numbers for that, you know, obviously, if, you know, some of the higher ones are more garage-oriented spaces, you know, 10,000 that we just threw out there, that's more of a ground lot space number. And, you know, we'll, we'll look at those numbers to see exactly, you know, what makes sense and propose, you know, bona fide. Maybe it is 10,000, but, you know, we just kind of threw that out as point of discussion.
Anybody else have any more comments on this?
We can put it toward more sharrows and additional accommodations for bike and pedestrian traffic. That'd be a good way to use it.
Help encourage that.
The main concern is going to be, if you're, if you're going to be, if you're going to be doing the, the fee in lieu, you got to have more definition as to where that money's going to go, where it's going to sit. Because I'm not, I wouldn't want to pay 50,000 for five spots and just have it sit there if I'm a business owner coming in trying to start something going.
Right. You'd want to know, is it going to be spent on the east side parking structure, west side parking structure? Where's it going to go?
Yeah, let's, let's say you're over here on the east side and you're looking at all this, this fancy little yellow map here and just say, oh, we're going to go all the way over here by the depot. How's that helping me over here on the other side of the river?
Yeah. And that's, that's a valid point. I mean, that would be something that we'd want to consider. I mean, we've kind of traditionally divided the downtown into quadrants. So, you know, maybe, you know, that, that fee in lieu has to be spent in that quadrant of downtown that it came from.
Yeah, that would, that would make sense.
Yeah. And that gives a little bit better definition to it. And also gives, you know, the, the person doing the development an opportunity to say, yeah, okay, I'm okay with that. If you're telling me that this is going to be spent, you know, in 10 years, we're looking at, in this quadrant, we're going to have to add 100 parking spaces or something that, that makes sense, that somebody can feel somewhat, you know, concrete in this is where my money's going to go.
So would you like us to bring something back to you? Or do you want us to start it through the plan commission process? Or what's, what's your pleasure?
I'd like to see it move forward. I don't know if we need to have another round come back here, or if we can agree tonight on what do we want for
What is, all right, sorry. I'm, I think I've confused myself in my head. The new buildings, the fee in lieu would be for new buildings and building additions. Right? That's the way you have it. And the spaces, you would calculate that based on our current minimums?
That would be, yeah, the method to determine how many parking spaces would be required there. And then ultimately, would, if they say, if we say 10 spaces are required under the zoning code, under the minimums, but you're only, and you're providing two, then they would have to say, we're going to, or we would have to say, the fee in lieu would be for those remaining eight spaces at X dollar per square foot, or X dollar per, per space.
And we think 10,000, I don't know how much it costs to put in a parking lot. I just don't want like the fee in lieu to be like, well, it'd be cheaper to just build the parking spots because
Yeah, the, yeah, the, like Scott said, the fee, the $10,000 number was kind of just a starting point or a blank, filling in a blank right there. But we can certainly take a look at, kind of survey some other municipalities that do have it. This wasn't exhaustive of a list here, but it would be a good way to at least prove up a number. We could also use figure, dollar amounts based on maybe some of the other parking improvements we've done, because we have built some in the downtown in the past few years. So that might be another source, figuring out what that fee could ultimately be based on.
Why don't we get some of that kind of fleshed out and then bring that back to us, kind of in a raw draft form of what you think we'd take to the plan commission so that we can see that, come to a piece with that number, whatever that is, and how the formula get, how it gets us to that. And then we'll, after we're okay with that, then we'll send it back to the plan commission.
Okay. Yeah, we can definitely do that.
Okay.
Hey, Alan.
Hold on.
I was gonna say, Drew, Scott, I think part of the differences in the numbers could be like, surface parking versus garage parking, where it's like, maybe, like, for like one north Washington, if they're going to short us X amount of spaces, that's where the 10,000 comes in, because that's how much it costs to build a space in a parking garage. Whereas like, if we're talking about a surface spot right out here over by the wastewater treatment plant, maybe that's only cost a thousand dollars, like, something like
Yeah, and that's, and that's, and that's the trouble of trying to figure it out. Because, you know, if, you know, we don't necessarily know what one entity would build. If they build a parking garage space, that's going to cost you more like 30, 35,000 per space. But the ground lots, you know, is probably going to be closer to the 10,000 or maybe less than that per space. You know, also thinking not just about construction, but, you know, is there land acquisition? So if city, if the city has to build a new parking lot, and we have to acquire land for it, for example, you know, there's, there's a land acquisition component as part of that. So it's, it's kind of a number that we would have to develop as, as an average of, you know, a garage space versus a, a ground space and, and, you know, how much is it going to cost overall? So it's going to be, it's going to be, it's not going to be an exact science. It's going to be kind of, you know, looking at all the components of it, trying to figure out what makes, what makes sense to, you know, functional numbers that we could use to build parking lots, but also, as Abby says, not making it so, so much so that they would say, you know what, I'd rather build parking than pay you the fee in lieu.
Right. Because, I mean, the goal would still be to get, you know, a density in, in these areas, right? We want to persuade the parking right on site.
But also, that may also, if, if that number is, you know, kind of in that gray area of, wow, is it really more efficient to do it this way or give the city the money for it? That may also make them adapt a building to include some parking in it or within it or behind it.
Inside of it or under
You know, I mean, I think of some of the buildings that I've seen where literally it's, to me, what like a lot of buildings are along the beaches and in Florida and stuff, where you've got a row of parking underneath one level of a house. And that's what, you bury the parking inside the building, you know, where that might make more sense for them, you know, if that number is like a $10,000 number.
I think there's a lot more motivation to supply the appropriate parking for the current use and future use in the downtown area than there are in the industrial areas where people are, you know,
Industrial, they're going to try to build it for what they think they're going to use it for.
Yes.
And that's all they're concerned about at that point. Does anybody online have any comments before we move forward? Nick?
I just want to, this is good conversation and it is a good balance that we're trying to do. But I do want to, one other variable to balance out is the business friendliness. I don't want anyone coming here going, oh, they, they try to nickel and dime, you know, everything. I'm, I'm trying to cut down and create more impervious land space and they're, you know, charging me more money for that. That doesn't play very well, too. So there's that balance I want to incorporate as we're thinking through the next step.
I think that's one of the reasons why we want to drop the minimums, is so that way there's not that, you're right, in-your-face first step, hey, I got to have two spaces per unit that I build here. If that's not there, then I think that's the first barrier to me is, you know, not throwing that wall up right in front of
I agree. And that's a good thing. But then when you start backing in
Right.
Fee in lieu and stuff like that. So, there's a balance on both, on everything.
Well, because that's what I'm thinking, too. Like, okay, what, what product, how productive can I be as a business owner on those two parking spaces? Well, I make up the difference in the money, money I'm going to invest in the city to go somewhere else. Can I, can I make that money back on making a productive use of this?
Yeah. Use square footage for
Yeah, for my own business purposes, so.
Anybody else? You got good direction from us, Scott, for what you
I think so. Yeah, I think we've got, we've got good information to come back to you guys with some more concrete revisions and then we can go from there.
And thanks for all your work on this, Drew. It was a real good, easy memo to read through.
Sure. Thank you for that.
Okay.
Thanks.
And now for tonight's marquee edition, the Illinois energy legislation, which hopefully tonight we get through this and be ready to have the mayor sign one and send it away.
Laura, can you put it up on the screen? Oh, you are. Thanks.
Is it in a format where we can just have you pick one and change a little, or are we just gonna?
Sure.
Just to let you know, we have eight members of the general public who are online right now. I would ask if they wish to speak, if you would like to raise your hand. At this point, we have one member of the public with her hand up right now.
Okay. So I guess what we should probably do is, we got our draft statements. Do you want to go through the A, B, and C's? Just to real quickly talk about those? Is there anything, anybody has strong feelings one way or the other on right off the bat? I should put my microphone over here where I can talk into it. I hope everybody also saw that Laura sent out an email on the discussion she and Gary had last week, one of the legislators already.
Well, if we're going to pick between A, B, and C on the top, I like C. Why impose a strict deadline on us when we don't have a guarantee of anything coming back?
Yeah, I kind of like that. But I also like the fact of having a date in there because I think it is something that especially the, the public sees that there is, you know, a date attached to what we feel like we should be doing as a community. And I think that to me, the more I look at this, both from the city standpoint, from the state standpoint, and what the federal government thinks they can do, I think 2050 is really a more realistic date than what was originally out in the SEJA. I think it was 2030 for most of the stuff to shut down, and then 2035 or 2040 for the next phases of it. And, you know, I, I really feel like the main things that we have to get across in this letter is, we're okay with that being the goal, with that being the end goal is that. But the way to get there can't, you know, destroy what we have now. I mean, it can't destroy our commercial and our industrial side by raising the rates 20% and, you know, kill the housing market or really hurt the people that are here to the point where they leave more than people are leaving Illinois today. And I think that's what will happen if we don't get some relief between here and there.
Can I, can I make the argument to agree with Alderman Sulphur and yet agree with you too, but by putting no date in, we're saying, if those goals that you just stated could be accomplished, feel free to get to 100% renewables earlier.
Yeah.
So by putting no date, you're saying when it can happen. If it can happen sooner than 2050, it can happen sooner than 2050. And, and we don't need to wait. But only if those things that you mentioned
And that's been my kind of fear all along, my trepidation all along, is the fact that, you know, here's, here's what they want us to attain. Here's what they want to do for the state, for, you know, the world, is they want us to shut this stuff down. But to me, they don't have the technology and the ability to get there with what they're talking about today. And I know that technology will get to that point. But, you know, that's some of the things that have happened in the past. You know, they started to build a plant when they started to build Prairie State, and they changed the CO2 and the sulfur emissions requirements during the construction. And they forced them to try to meet that. And then they backed a little bit off of it because nobody could figure out how to attain the numbers they wanted to attain. And that's kind of, I think, where we are here, is it's all well and good to want that at, at the end, but if you can't practically make that happen, do you punish everybody in between those two things? And that's what I don't want to see happen. Mark?
I support Chris on this, that, well, actually, I'm sorry, I support you on the original thing, 2050. I would set a date. And the only reason I would set a date, I would set a date of 2050 is, one, it looks better for us. So, so there's some optics on there. But the second part is, I have a goal to retire when I'm 62. I don't know that that's going to happen, but I'm going to do everything in my power to make that happen. If I put a date out there, actually work to the date, if I just say, hey, I have a goal to retire, well, sure, that's, I certainly hope that happens. But I haven't put, there's no skin in the game. There's nothing to shoot for. And I think that you have to put a date out there to, to shoot for. And it doesn't harm us. Again, if I don't retire at 62 and I retire at 63, well, I still retired. And I just wasn't able to meet my goal. So, a goal doesn't mean it has to happen. We're just setting that out there as something we're shooting for. So if you say 2050, then you have something you're shooting for. And that's not up to us anyway, to be honest. I mean, this, this statement is a nice statement to have, but it doesn't really matter in the grand scheme of things. That's not as important as the following statements.
You have to be realistic, though. I mean, you can have a goal to retire at 62. You have to realize, okay, that's, that's a good goal to have, but are you going to be able to have health insurance then? Because you don't get Medicaid till 65. So, you want to have the, the date be a real, more realistic in terms of the monetary issue that's going on here with the whole situation. So, if you want to put a date in, it has to factor in how it's going to affect us from a monetary standpoint.
Joe?
One thing I like about putting the date in there is because your next sentence is related to the construction bonds being paid off, which happens in 2050. 20, we support going to 100% renewable by 2050, and 2050 wasn't a year we pulled out of a hat. Here's why we say 2050, because that's when our bonds are paid off and that's when it becomes financially sustainable for the city of Batavia to, to have that transition made.
And I'm fine with that if we go with A and then you go with C for the second
Yeah, they've, they've got to go together.
They've got to go together.
To keep stressing that here's why that year is important, is because these different pieces fall together.
That's kind of why I asked if there was a way when we started talking about this, is if we decide that we want this part and this part and that part to go together. I think that's where we're going to end up tonight. So that's what I think we should, should work towards. Anybody on this side again?
I
Nick, go ahead.
I was going to add in, but it, it kind of six to one half a dozen to the other. And maybe Laura will, will look at you because you actually had a conversation with Maura. She gets it. She gets it.
Yes.
You know, maybe ask her, what made you get it? Because we're trying to sell something and trying to think like they're thinking. I completely agree when you set a goal, a time, I mean, it's known, you need to put a timeframe in, but this timeframe means nothing to Batavia. We're just putting a time that's a random number. Like, I don't think it's needed because it doesn't really lock us into anything. Like you say, this isn't our, it's for them. Like, we support it getting there any year. So it's kind of random, that, that's why I don't like it in there because it really doesn't mean anything to us. I mean, if, if, it could be 2030, I mean, it could be any year. We have the same concerns and the same issues, however, we're gonna get there. So picking one year over the other just doesn't make sense.
So to answer your question?
Yes.
I think that what was most persuasive in our conversation with Representative Hershaw was to say that the burden, the cost should be borne equally amongst all ratepayers in Illinois of the goal of achieving 100% renewable energy. And that was not true in a very meaningful way for the city of Batavia is shouldering far more burden than many other ratepayers in the state of Illinois. And so you're right to say that this particular preamble does not really get at the heart of that issue. It's all of us, it's akin to us saying we all would like to be in the place where we are 100% relying on renewable energy. We all want to get to that place, but we just don't want to be the, you know, in particular harmed by it in the process.
And I think with going, going with goal A with having, having the 100% renewable achieved by 2050 is really starting off by saying we agree with what their end goal is. And the end goal, I think of CJA and almost every other version of the act that I've read is that they want to be renewable by 2050. You know, I think that's, that's kind of been the target of just about every plan that's out there, is that's where they want to end up. Now, they get their different ways and with different fees and different, you know, modes, but that's really the end goal. And I think to start that off and say that's what we agree with, because, you know, we're in agreement, that's where we want to go and that's, we agree with you that that, that is truly, you know, our end goal is the same as theirs. But yet, everything in the middle is different, or most of it in the middle is different.
Alan?
Your honor?
I, I certainly subscribe to everything I've read and participated in in these meetings. I guess the one thing I'm thinking is, is that this is a very fluid situation. I mean, I, you know, 10, 15 years from now, we really don't know how it's all gonna be working at that point, what's, what will have happened and what won't. So I'm just wondering if we, if we shouldn't at some point in the document just put a paragraph in which we suggest that the future city councils between now and 2050, instead of, you know, put a requirement on themselves that they review the document and the circumstances that surround it at that, at that coming point in time in history. In other words, we just don't do this for today and it's over, that 10 years from now or whatever you decide, there should be an effort by the committee to get together and let's see where we're at right now. What's changed? Do we need to adapt this thing or redirect it or whatever have you? I think it's good to have the statement, but I'm not so sure that we can totally understand what could be happening in 2050.
And I, I think I agree with you the way you stated that, but I think this really has to be about the here and now of what's being proposed and how we have to protect our ratepayers and be part of the solution moving that forward without, you know, destroying business and the housing market here. I mean, I think that that's what this is really has to be about, is about what's being proposed and how we need to have some relief from what is, you know, been out there on paper so far.
I totally agree. I just think we should make some kind of futuristic statement in which we suggest that 10 years, whatever time we set, should be a time when this, where whoever's on the council then gets together and says, well, this is what they decided in 2002, 2000 or 2021, but let's, let's see where we're at 2031, you know, and see if there's some need to adjust it. And no, I don't think we should necessarily totally lock this down forever and there may be a better opportunity evolve itself as time goes forward, but I don't think we should just say, this is it. We need to, we need to leave the door open a little bit so that we can take a review of it every 10 years or whatever.
Okay. Enan?
We were talking about how the, the goal is to get to 100% renewable energy. Like you said, the mayor said this is fluid, we have no idea when this could happen. So with the legislation, it could be a merger of a bunch of different things where it could be 2060, 2035, 2040, we have no idea. So saying that the goal is just to get to 100% renewable energy, so not having a, a time, just this first part, the goal, the goal is 100% renewable energy. We don't know when. So dropping the, the date or not having a date gives us the flexibility to, to go over this again and maybe in eight years, in 2030, 2031, we, we look at this again because I probably won't be here in 2030, in, in eight years. Like, some of us won't be here. It'll be a whole nother council that will have to look at this again. And maybe the technology, maybe we're able to get into, if something happens with the legislation that we're able to get out of our PPA or, and into renewable contracts that we get there before 2050. I don't know.
Yeah, but this is just a letter about today's legislation.
Right, that's what...
We're not tying into...
Yeah, I think we have to focus on...
We're not making a statement for our commitment for years.
The fact that we're trying to have an impact on those writing legislation today that will affect us into the future. We can deal with the effects of that in the future, we can deal with changes of that in the future, but this really has to be about the legislation that is being proposed now. Because if we allow it to go through, or, you know, if we don't get some relief or we don't get some changes in it going forward, it is gonna have a devastating effect on this city.
Right. But are we talking about, are we just deciding right now to choose all As or all Cs or all Bs?
No, I think we're trying to figure out...
We're just looking at the first part, right?
What parts of those do we want to use moving forward? And the reason why I felt like, you know, having the, the date in there was to come out, begin with, to say that we agree with them.
Right.
Because if you come out and it's nothing but negative or nothing but ambiguous timeframe or statement going forward, then it's very hard for that legislator to think that we are serious about certain specific points in it. And, you know, as many times as I've had discussions with all the different legislators that I've dealt with over the time I've been on the council, to get them to walk away with something that they know is a devastating effect upon us and to see what they can do to make sure that that doesn't happen, that's the kind of thing that I think will stick with them and that they will think about as they do that. Now, I don't know that that's gonna make them change or vote or whatever, you know, that outcome may be, but the reality is, is we have to make those statements very clear to them about the things that will harm the city, the things that would benefit the city, and the things that would benefit that we agree with, we have to also make sure that those are really clear to them. Because again, I don't think we can go in and just throw negatives at them.
No, right, yeah.
And expect anything to happen. I think that, you know, they, they realize, or at least I hope they realize, the situation that we are in is so much different than, say, West Chicago or Aurora, you know, with their ratepayers. And again, I think the statement that Laura made was that, you know, it has, that, that cost of getting to this, because it is a statewide benefit, a countrywide benefit, a worldwide benefit, has to be borne by everybody. And, and not that, you know, the situation that we're in has to have the tab picked up by everybody, but if you're gonna force us out of that situation that we know we don't have a way out of because we tried every which way we could to get out of it to this point, that we will require something to get there. And if you're gonna say to us that, you know, what is a very stable and steady production plant for us has to be closed and we're still gonna have to pay for that and then buy electricity elsewhere, at the same time, we can't just double that up. I mean, we just can't do that to our ratepayers. They will not adjust to that. They will, they will flee. And that's something that I think, to me, that just has to be the main thrust to this is whatever they come up with, there has to be class for municipally-owned electric utilities that are part of Prairie State. There has to be a class that's part of everything else in the state.
Right.
It's not part of it, it's an investor-owned utility.
Right, everything you just said is right, but it doesn't include, it doesn't have to include a date to it. Regardless of when it happens, all of that stuff's gonna happen.
I think the statement has to be that we're, we agree to the 100% renewables.
Yeah.
And if we don't want the date in there, then we won't put the date in.
If we put the date in, I like what, what Chris and Joe said was it's tied to something. Like, if, if we put 2050, then it, the next statement there, the part is, is that it's tied to when the original construction bonds are fully paid off. If we, if, if we put a date in there, we kind of have to go with that because that, it's like I said, it's not something we just arbitrarily pulled out.
Right, and I think that that also makes a good point, if we have the date in there, that makes a good tie-in to the things that we need relief on.
And, and as why?
With the date as part of it. If we don't have the date in there as part of it and they, you know, decide that, hey, we're gonna pick 2060, then they'll say, well, you know, you've got an extra 10 years to figure out how to get all that back from your ratepayers before you have to get there, so we're not gonna help you. So if we have a date that's tied to that and, and that becomes part of the burden to us, then it's something that they will see as, okay, well, then we need to figure out, is there a way that the state can provide relief during that time period?
I think we have to combine A and C. Every goal, every good goal has a date, it's time-bound, you can't just, nobody makes a goal at work without putting, yes, exactly. Now, some people are gonna argue that this isn't realistic, but that's not, again, that's our point. That's our point here is not whether or not this is realistic, whether the technology exists or not, we're trying to protect the ratepayers in Batavia, period. So yes, state, if you think you can do by 2050, we, we're on board. However, it has to be after we've met our financial obligation. So you combine those two and then we're done with that section.
Yeah, I'm fine with you. If you want to do it that way, as long as, if you're gonna put A, it has to be C for the second.
Yeah.
Anybody disagree?
No. I disagree a little bit. I'll speak up here. Um, I think, I mean, I've been listening into these meetings now for months and hearing in. I think something that I've picked up on a lot is that we're coming from a place of fear, which is coming through in our statements and in our wordings, and I think we need to really be working with our legislators. I mean, I've also heard that we all agree that clean energy and getting there is very important and we all like have, we see the value of that. We want this for our children, we want this for our grandchildren, we know it's not good for our health. But then we keep saying, but, and I get the but, I understand that fully. But if we believe in clean energy, then we should be doing everything we can to support our legislators where they feel like we want to work with them. So like I, just writing notes right now, you know, if we went with C, the city of Batavia supports the goal, take out a date of achieving 100% renewable energy, we want to work with you, knowing that they're the ones putting together this legislation, not us, and we need to work with them to get there. But I do agree, then getting to the cost impacts for Batavia and being like, we need assistance, we need help, also realizing every single community member we've heard from supports CJA and we need to listen to that. We haven't heard a single community member show up here asking us to consider their tax rates. And even Geneva last night, they also did not have a single community member show up to their meeting, not supporting CJA. Like, they all said, please move in this direction. We want to see you be the movers. So, um, my question is, is how can we come up with programs or ask the state to help us with programs and financial aid for the businesses or the residents who can't see the tax rates? You know, can we be thinking along those lines? And maybe that's not here and now, I understand that, that this is a completely different thing we're working on, but...
The thing I would say in response to what you just said was, one, I think if you went and walked up to somebody sitting in McDonald's right now and told them that if the CJ Act passed as written, that their electric rates would go up approximately 20% in Batavia, I don't think anybody sitting in McDonald's today would know that.
Right, but have we explained to them the why we want clean energy, because what the coal plant's doing?
But I was just gonna say, I think every person that you asked in McDonald's would tell you, yeah, I want clean energy, I'd love to, I'll be renewable.
But not at the price.
But not at that cost. And that's, I think, the reality of it, you know, is that. I don't think the general population has a clue that that's what CJA is really proposing to do in this state.
Well, and that's why I do support later in the, the letter that we are trying to form here, that we are telling our legislators, just as you talked to Representative Hershaw today, that there will be impact. And so we, you know, how can we, they take that into consideration?
Because I think what would be important to that person sitting there in McDonald's would be to know that a Batavian isn't gonna pay 20 times more for CJA than a ComEd customer. I think that's, that's fundamentally a, people would feel that that's unfair.
Another response is in terms of the people that show up, to, for instance, like the city Geneva meetings or people who have spoken here are gonna be a very small portion because they're the activists. The silent majority is gonna be looking at the bottom line and everybody's gonna think that, you know, green energy, for them, you know, as a concept is great.
It's good.
But you know what? I'm living in this city right here, in the city of Batavia. This is not, you know, I'm not, we're not gonna save the world. The city of Batavia is not gonna save the world. So you need to look at, the silent majority is gonna say, how is this affecting me economically? And what can we do to lessen the impact of that for the most part? That's my opinion.
Alan?
Abby?
I wanted to piggyback on what Leah was saying, just a general comment about the way that we're talking about the shared burden across the state because there's, there's going to be communities like Batavia speaking to their representatives, saying that for the past two centuries, the rest of the state of Illinois has not been sharing the burden of that coal plant next to my house. Batavia does not have the asthma rates and the respiratory rates and the water contamination rates. They've been paying for that and we have not been sharing in that cost. So we have the very fortunate position to be sitting here worried about a couple hundred dollars on our tax bill every year. But their, their position and their burden and their, their ask and their plea in this bill is a little bit of a different position than ours, so I just want to be mindful of the fact that the, the shared cost is, is not equal, it's never been equal. We can, and I, I support the language that we have in here to try and alleviate some of our tax burden, but I just want to be mindful of the way that we're framing that.
You just reminded me of the other thing that I wanted to say. Realize this is not part of a tax burden.
Right.
This is part of our rates for our electric utility. And I know it, it's very hard sometimes to remember that that's a separate thing in the enterprise fund that that's a rate.
And it's a couple hundred dollars, but it's not our lungs, like the, the human health, the, the representatives that are getting the human health speech, you know, in our, in our economic speech, it's just, it's different. Be mindful of that.
I would like to, see, okay, I'm not muted. I would like to go off of what Leah and Abby have said too and ask if, I know that it was worked on before, or there was solutions that were tried to be found before CJA was proposed to the tune of a lot of money. I'm sorry, my phone just went, go outside. Um, is there a way we can try to assistate, not for monetary relief, but for a creative solution? We are in a situation with these bonds... is there a way we can try to assistate, not for monetary relief, but for a creative solution? We are in a situation with these bonds. And that's been explained to me. I didn't know that as a Batavia resident before I got on city council. Um, I know I was horrified when I learned about the coal plant and all of that stuff. Um, it, from a health perspective and from an environmental perspective and everything like that, is it worth investigating? Is there a way we can look into a new solution now that this CJ legislation is here? Um, is that something we can pursue? I don't know. It's just a question I had.
Yeah, that I think is part of the goal of this letter is to make those financial issues known to the legislators. That, you know, our situation is completely different from a comm ed, um, you know, community that serves by comm ed. That doesn't have that kind of, um, issues tied to their bills. And I think that's why it's so important that we get this information through to the legislators that are making the decisions on crafting this bill. That if there is some creative way they can figure out to help us, that, that would be something that they do. If that means that, you know, every household in the state of Illinois pays five dollars a year to get rid of, you know, what has been termed as the, the largest CO2 generator, then that's the reality. And if that money that's generated from that in some way, shape or form can pay off, you know, a portion of the bonds from Prairie State for everybody that's an owner of Prairie State. Then that's a shared burden. And that may be, I don't know, one of the ways that they could figure out how to do this. You know, that's, that's gonna be up to the legislature to decide that. And that's gonna be one of those things that by us stating all of the facts that we have about what our rates are, what our rates would change to with all the proposed things that are in CJ or in the governor's bill. You know, or I can't remember the name of the other one that I've read through.
CJ.
Yeah, th- that, those.
Path to one hundred.
Those things, if they are taken into account and figured out how to do that, then it makes this easier to get that achievement made, you know, to get us to that renewables spot. Again, I, I don't know that we've got the technology, but that's again, on somebody else's plate to figure that out. You know, and, and they will. I mean, they'll figure out how to do that. Or they'll change the requirements of what they view as renewable by then.
And that was something that I mentioned to Representative Herschauer was that the city of Batavia would be, uh, very willing to accept the bailout. Is basically what we're talking about. Um, having the state of Illinois, um, you know, in, in some way pay off those three hundred and forty-eight million dollars of bond debt. And that's just the NIPA bond debt. You know, that doesn't even include, um, what owners in IMEA own for their share of ownership in Prairie State and others in eight other states.
Yeah, and I think that's just where it's complicated. And Leah, I agree. I mean, twenty thirty, go for it. As long as it doesn't burden Batavia. However, that is solved. I'm, I'm not an economist. I'm not a financial person. I can't come up with those numbers. I think our statement is just like, hey, we agree, we agree. However, if this is, I can't, I, I know, um, there are several people in Batavia that cannot take that hit. And I know that if that happens to our businesses and the businesses, the, the industrial area starts leaving, it's, it's a downward spiral. And this will not be the same place. It will not be the same place. You have, Marisheoki loves to talk about how people come back that went here in high school with him and they come back and they're just shocked at what Batavia looks like now. Like, oh my gosh, it was, you know, this is a vibrant community. It will not be the vibrant community. All of our kids are going to high school right now. They'll come back and be like, oh my gosh, what happened to Batavia? It disappeared.
There are also businesses though, that are looking for places that are pursuing clean energy.
But we wouldn't be any different than anybody else because the state is.
The whole place, yes. But if we're still on coal, then they won't come here because they will be like, well, that place is, you know, living in the past.
Nobody is proposing that we, I mean, we all agree, we want to get to clean energy. We just have an extra burden. So we, we've debated that and we've all come to consensus. We want this. We support clean energy. They just, the legislature needs to consider our issues as they move forward. It's not just a blank check.
And we just want to level the playing field.
And, and you know, and, and I'm fine with, you know, saying, okay, we agree with them, close the, the Prairie State plant by twenty thirty. My only caveat to that would be is if they have a realistic, workable plan to provide baseload power to replace it with.
Doesn't matter. Because if they don't, if they don't, then they won't. I mean, that's, and that's, and that's not part of what we're gonna talk about. This is all about the financial impact.
I don't need to have that as part of this letter.
Yeah.
But in all reality, that's the thing that if it was me downstate arguing about it, that's the question I would have is, show me the plan of how you're gonna do that and make it feasible and not end up in rolling brownouts and blackouts. Because we don't have enough electricity during the middle of the summer.
And, and I just, I mean, respectfully, Alan, it's just, it's a moot point because it doesn't matter. Again, these are goals. These are not, nobody's going down there and, and etching this in granite and saying, we can't change this. They're trying to move us forward responsibly. And, and I, I just asked a question. I mean, does everybody agree that, yes, we agree that we need to do something. But we also agree that we cannot force this burden on our industry, our businesses and our, and our residents. I mean, that's, that's my point. I don't care how it's said exactly, just that that's what it's said. That, hey, we're on board. However, and there's the big but. You never like to say that. Hey, great job, but, well, that's where we are. Great job on this, but this is gonna kill.
I mean, I even think of, okay, this all passes. Everything goes the way that it, it looks like it's going. And five years from now, they wanna build a plant making wind turbines or they wanna make a, a plant in Batavia, um, putting together solar panels. They won't do it if the rates are twenty percent higher in Batavia than they are in West Chicago or Aurora or Elburn or any other city around us that has open space in an industrial area built. That twenty percent is gonna be a killer for any expansion or any retention even of both residential and, uh, industrial. So I mean, that, that's kinda what I feel like has to be a main thrust of this letter is, you know, the statements that are in here about that, that, you know, we acknowledge what those costs are gonna be. We know that, you know, it's gonna be everybody's responsibility to get there. But for us to get there because of the responsibilities we already have, being in a different situation is gonna require help from the state. And if they can't guarantee that, there's gonna be, there's gonna be a real problem here. So, you know.
Has anybody ever looked at the back of a dollar bill? An eagle, one hand holding olive branch, or one claw holding an olive branch, one claw holding arrows? You throw the olive branch out there, but then we need to throw a bunch of arrows out there saying, fine. We're, we come, we come in peace, but this is, these are our, this is what our real demands are because if, if not, this destroys our community.
And again, I think that's, we've brought up a lo- enough times, but I think we all are in agreement that, you know, for us to be okay with this legislation, we have to have some kind of help or some relief. And I think it's just, which one of these do we wanna pick to put in there? Cause I think we really wanna flesh this out tonight so that we're at peace with it and move it forward. Because I think as the, uh, Maura said to Lauren, Gary, when she was here, this is moving and this is moving quick. And so I think some of it is, I think the state of Illinois wants to have this in place before there is a federal, um, infrastructure bill moving through. Because that's where I think this gets paid for.
Then Alan, do we do a?
They're gonna pay for it anyway.
Do we do a, a straw poll and, and move forward? Because getting fourteen people to agree will be here till next Tuesday.
So, uh, do the.
I'm good with the year.
Go A, B, C?
Sure.
And just have people vote for which one? And, uh, one that gets the most votes is the one we put forth to city council as your position on the seventeenth.
And hopefully we don't tie.
And, and just, I want everybody to understand. This is just a presentation to legislation. I mean, us communicating with them, uh, and, and we do that for the new ones calling out, that'll have a greater impact. I mean, we're not, you know, this isn't handcuffing us or anything. This is just getting a unified statement together. Um,
figured I'd get.
And it's vague enough. Every one of those is vague enough and, and gets to the point. So.
I don't wanna beat a dead horse.
Do we have Jenny call names?
No, that was last Saturday.
It was a cream, like berry butter.
Steroid cream.
Right.
We have, uh, do, I, do we have anybody online? Sarah? Yeah. And Tony. Tony doesn't have a hand.
I'm here.
Okay. So, uh, those in favor of statement A, raise your hands.
Are we talking statement or the whole letter with statement?
The first statement.
Just the first statement.
First statement.
First one, okay.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Two online.
My answer is dependent upon what we do with the second one, though. I'll vote for A or C as long as you use C in the second one.
I agree with you. I agree.
So whatever anybody wants to do, A or C.
It's clear as mud.
Okay.
Seven to nine for A.
I move A, C.
Who wants A?
Yeah, it's, it's already clear.
Understood. We'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
Yeah.
All right. So did you have a number there?
It was over, it was like seven at least.
It was over.
Seven-ish?
All right.
Seven or eight.
Seven-ish.
So it could be seven-ish for C as well.
Dan here? Did Dan disappear?
He disappeared.
Dan disappeared.
Okay.
Okay, so I saw nobody for A. B. C.
Did you start all the letters?
Are we still on the first question or are we now? No, we're on the second question.
Somewhere on the second.
No, wait, 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 wait.
Yeah, we didn't even call all of the statements for the first one.
So we're on the second question now?
Yeah, the, uh, the city.
I thought you were calling A, B, like the vote of the first one going through them.
No, because she had over seven for A.
Gotcha. So that's a done deal.
Yeah, that's a done deal. So.
Perfect.
We're on C for question two. Wait, wait, wait. If we're back to question two, then I would like that, or back at A.
Yeah, are we gonna do A at, at question two?
Question two, A. I did A and nobody raised their hand. Okay, I didn't realize we were on question two.
We got one over here.
I'm, I'm in A too. I'm sorry.
So closing Prairie State in twenty thirty means that the city of Batavia is responsible for decommissioning costs at the same time as they're paying off the bond payments and they have to go out for another contract for their, um,
Well, that's why.
Capacity.
Reflective of the next.
Yeah, that's why it's tough. I understand where you guys are going.
Does C continue on? Cause can we scroll down a little?
Let's see, I can agree with C if it had a statement in it that we would support closing Prairie State at whatever time construction bonds are either fully satisfied by all Prairie State owners or the state steps in and helps.
And that's where the next part came in.
Yeah, I guess, I, it's almost like we need to take B and somehow craft, you know, what, we support closure of Prairie State and all other fossil fuel generation by.
Can I ask just, and, and I have absolutely, I mean, I would not be offended if you say, nope, that's a stupid idea. Um, would you like to start with the four statements that I provided to, um, okay, start with that and add verbiage to that or change the verbiage in those four statements?
Do you have them up here or can you put them up here?
Depends if Microsoft is going to, let me, I have a way to do it. Hang on. I do. I can go to.
Was that in the email?
I'd rather us go through.
I think we should go through what's here because I think this is a format that I think we're gonna put it into to send it to the legislator.
I have a comment though. Uh, I think everyone should see that statement. There are the, the four bullet points that were shared with, with Rep, uh, Herschauer. Um, I think that can get us all on the same page as we move through here. It was an email at four thirty this afternoon.
I got it.
And I understand where, where Leah and Abby are going with this. And it's like, hey, twenty thirty, I'm assuming the next statement is however.
Yes.
As long as it's not, I'm okay with them, I'm okay with them closing it next year if they've got a solution for us. I really don't care.
I'm fine with that. You know, could we use A from that saying by twenty thirty with assistance from the state?
Yes.
Handle the debt. I, with assistance from the state to handle the debt and the purchase power agreement.
Or you modify C to say, at the very end of you say, but this could happen sooner with assistance from the state to help alleviate the debt.
I think it needs to be as simple as possible. And I think the first one could achieve that if we said by twenty thirty, cause that's what they want. Again, let's agree with what they want and say, with the assistance of the state in regards to our purchase power agreement and bond debt. If we add those two things in there, A can work.
So. All this is, is this is, we're not, we're not rewriting legislation. We're just saying, hey, can you think about this? Because this is gonna be really bad. So I, I'm okay with agreeing with them. That, hey, these are great ideas. However, we just, we need, you know, we need relief from our.
Then if we agree to that and the state can't figure out how to come up with the baseload power, that's the state's problem.
Right.
That's the state's failure, not ours.
Right. So here are the four points. Um, first I address the penalties that Batavia faces as a owner of Prairie State. Coal severance fee, the community reinvestment fund contribution. And in the governor's legislation, there is also a carbon fee for the years that Prairie State remains open. And those are the costs that will sustain immediately with those fees of five million dollars per year. But then it addresses that those fees placed on Batavia and not on other municipalities in the state will make us, uh, not a, uh, hospitable place for, for businesses. And when they leave, we won't be able to replace them. Residents try to leave, um, it's gonna affect their property values. And as property values go down, so do, uh, so does our tax base and our ability to pay for and maintain the level of services. Um, and, and I compare us in that case to investor owned utilities who have millions of customers. That they can spread these costs across. We have ten thousand customers that we can spread these costs across. The second point are the bond payments. And so just letting them know that our own bond obligations continue through twenty forty-two, whether the plant is open or not. And early closure, you know, whether the plant closes or not, yeah, we still have to make those bond payments. But we also have these two additional costs that will come from the earlier closure of the plant. And that's the replacement capacity at four million dollars per year and decommissioning. They can add that four million dollars per year, um, for every, every year into the future. And then, uh, having to adhere to the renewable portfolio standards. We talked about that last time while our purchase power agreement or power sales agreement are still in place. We'd be happy to purchase renewables as, uh, that capacity allowed. And finally, the difference, we don't need ICC oversight. It's the investor owned for profit organizations that need a watchdog organization. Our rate payers elect our board.
And I found these to be very impactful because of the reaction that Mara had to you by presenting it. She understands how others down in Springfield are gonna think about this. So when this goes to Karina, Karina's gonna see it also and probably have the same feel from that. It's not long, but it directly talks about how this is going to impact Batavia. And how it kind, how it, we differ a little bit from some of the other communities, but this is saying, this is what it's going. saying, this is what it's going to do to our community. And I really felt that this was really impactful. It, it, very simple written.
I like it.
Yeah, I, I do too.
This is direct to the point. You know, maybe started off with the Statement A from the letters that you had set up and really just use that as the lead-in to this, you know, because this is truly, hey, this is what impacts us most. These things, and these are things that without aid in several of these areas, we don't get through this well. It's devastating, so.
Yeah, and I think this, this is the, yeah, the first, the statement of, hey, yeah, we're good with renewable energy by 2050. We're good with shutting down Prairie State by 2030. However, this is why this is a problem for us. And those statements say it really, really well, so if you can come up with a way that that doesn't happen.
Yeah, let me just marry the two together for...
Yeah.
The city council meeting on the 17th and we'll see.
And I, I think, I think...
Like you said, now, coming from a place of fear, just saying, you know...
And I get that, like, the reality and...
Sometimes reality is scary.
Is fear.
Exactly.
And I, and I, when I got this this afternoon, was reading through it and your response from, um, Representative Hershaw, or like her stated response, I was glad to hear that she seemed to get it. You know?
Very much so.
Yeah.
And she said, I'm going to be in front of a lot of people who will have an impact on this and I just need succinct things to say to them. So if you've got four points, this, 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 and this need to be addressed.
And if we have more than two legislators that get it and can say that...
And they also very much care of that clean energy. So, you, they're very passionate about that, so for them to, to be weighing both of them, the both sides for Batavia.
One more thing, though. Instead of saying 2030, can't we say something to the effect of, supports the closure of Prairie State at such time as the following issues are fully addressed and then we set forth, forth all the following issues?
That's it really in, isn't that really in bullet point two of Laura? You know, that, you know, for, closing Prairie State before the bonds are paid off is another devastating financial blow to Batavia. And then explaining some of that to them, you know, in real dollars and cents terms of, you know, what, what it's gonna add to our ratepayers during that time.
So why would we support closing it by 2030, though? I mean, I don't think we should say we support closing it before 2030.
Right.
By 2030, I think we should be saying something to the effect of, the city supports the closure of Prairie State at such, at such time as all of the issues below are fully addressed. I mean, that's what I think.
I get that.
We support closing Prairie State, but not until these issues are crossed.
I think that was how Abby put it at the last meeting.
Well, I wondered too, what is, um, I haven't been following who's on what committee, um, are, is Karina Villa and Representative Hershaw, are they, are they in these negotiations or are we just asking them to vote no? Or are they gonna be able to come back to us and say, here's what we're working on, we're gonna get this work in for you? Or is it, we're just lobbying them to say?
I get the impression that they're not directly on the committees, but that they are participating in the Democratic caucus for the legislation. And so, you know, they, they come together with their committee person who is on that to say, when you're in the room, can you please, you know, push these considerations forward? That, that's the impression that I get.
I think you're right.
Yeah.
I would have to assume that there's downstate legislators, too, that would work with them because...
Oh my gosh, yes.
Prairie State closing would be devastating to many communities downstate.
You bet.
So, I mean, am I hearing now that we, we, and I'm asking a question, I'm not making a statement, that council would be in consensus with the four points that Laura presented and we really need to work on an introductory, a couple of sentences to introduce it, and then a couple of sentences to wrap it up and that becomes the letter?
Are people comfortable with that?
Yeah, I think if you do, like, like we were talking about, you make it sound like, you know, that, yeah, we're all in agreement, but only when these conditions are met. Thanks for, thanks for consideration.
And Gary, can we weave in some of the other verbiage? Because you, you fleshed out the ideas a lot more in your letter than I have in here.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get to, because my letter and your letter are, are not the same.
No, mine is, mine is like picking...
Right.
Picking a lane.
Right, which I think is, I mean, listening again to the consensus of council, I, I think that that's what, that, that the consensus is, is to make it strip down, strip it, strip it way down to bone bare, bare bones. This is what we present to our legislators and that's what this does, these four points.
It gives them the points to talk about. And that's what we want them to do. They, we want them to speak on our behalf.
Yeah.
So when we give them, you know, fluff, it's hard to do that, but when you strip it down just like this, they've got points that they can directly speak to. And that's what they need to be able to, to get our needs across.
So, instead of almost the form of a letter with verbiage, we wanna do verbiage to introduce it, bullet points, which is what Laura's got, and then verbiage to say, thank you for your support.
The bullet points will stick out and they will read that. As they're glancing through, they'll be able to pick out pieces as they're reading through, where a letter, they kinda get lost in it. You know, when you go and look for instructions on how to do something, when you see like a long paragraph, you get lost, but when you have bullet points, that's what you pick out.
I, I just looked through the bill here online, have a search of this real quick, and Karina Villa is listed as one of the co-sponsors. I think we also ought to think about, there's three chief co-sponsors.
Elgin. Uh, Castro?
One is, uh, Emmanuel Chris Welch, um, Robin Gable, Carol Ammons, and Grant Worley are chief co-sponsors. They may also be a good recipient of the letter, being the chief co-sponsors. I'm sure they're involved in anything that gets brought up to actually be a change to the legislation. Um, that's one thing that I know in the past that I've done when we've wanted to contact legislators is look who's the chief sponsors or anybody that I recognize a name on that I've talked to before, that's who I'll send a letter to or a witness slip to, because I think, you know, they, they usually respond. So that way, we make sure we get it in front of as many as we can, not just our locals, but also the chief co-sponsors, because I think they're more apt to be the ones that if something's gonna get passed or changed, if they're in support of it, it has a good chance to change.
Well, the spot, co-sponsor Worley is a Naperville guy, so he's got the electric situation in his face, too, with Naperville.
You know, and, and I thought about it, I, I would happen to be down just off of Springfield this weekend. Springfield's also got a coal-fired plant there. I wonder what the, the change or the, the differences are gonna be for them. Will they be paying the same, you know, fees and everything that have been proposed and all, all the legislation so far as the rest of the state?
They would be, yeah.
Yeah, that they would be...
CDLP, yeah, they're their own, they're their own, they're independent, remember?
Right, they're their own, their own entity.
They're their own entity.
Remember that, so, you know, I think that, you know, we, we have to make sure that we focus this on our local legislators. I think we have to make sure that we get the chief sponsors involved in that. And then we might even wanna send a letter to the governor with it, you know, the same thing to the governor so that he sees that, hopefully sees that. You know, and a, again, my feeling really is they wanna get this legislation done quickly because they wanna be ready to position themselves to, with help from Durbin, Duckworth, to be able to get something out of the federal government, to be able to fund this one. Because there's no way the state of Illinois is gonna fund what they've proposed in any of these bills. If you read through and look at the numbers for what's gonna be required to entice people to put up solar and wind, they're gonna have to have federal money to help with that. So, to me, that's one of the reasons why this has been really pushed on hard the last couple of, or month or month and a half, is as soon as there was talk of the amount of money coming out of the federal government that they've talked about, they know they have to have this ready. If they don't have this ready, somebody else is gonna get that money.
You have two members of the, uh, public on, who have their hands up for comment. May I?
Are we all done with our comments for now? You're from the public now? Okay.
Okay, first is Alex Zelis from the Batavia Environmental Commission.
Hey, can you all hear me?
Yes, Alex.
All right, um, so I think this was a really great discussion and, um, we wanted to just add a couple of our thoughts based on the, um, draft letter that you are talking about tonight and that city staff had provided, but after your discussion, I know that's changing as we speak. Um, so I just, I guess on behalf of the commission, wanted to say that we would agree with focusing this letter on the city's support of renewable energy goals, um, with the target years of 2050 and 2030, but as you guys have been discussing, while also clearly outlining, um, the significant financial impact, um, that may result from legislation. Um, but we also wanted to just note that our, the costs that we're kind of assuming right now are also projection based on one proposed bill. Um, so we're not, you know, sure what the final bill is gonna look like, but I think it sounds like we all kind of understand that. Um, and I guess the other point to add, um, I'm just looking through my notes here, that rather than requesting, um, financial assistance in the amount of $5 million annually, um, we would recommend one of your A statements, um, that the city request your support to require the state to prove, to provide financial assistance to help balance the new cost of the need for continued economic prosperity. And we say that because we think that the changes that would be sought by council would provide, provide relief from the need to purchase additional renewables and, uh, provide partial relief from the carbon fees, um, that would equate to the financial relief that the city needs without relying on direct cash payment. Um, so these would be changes that would be within the legislation and wouldn't rely on Springfield to send an actual check and would be more reliable, um, relief than what the city has thought before. And I guess that's a kind of final point that, I, I'm sure you guys are probably gonna do this at some point, but just reminding again that there's other Prairie State communities that are also in a similar position as us, um, and that hopefully, as we move down this road, we can gather with those communities and improve our bargaining power, um, in Springfield. So, I think that's kind of what we wanted to add, um, just taking a final look at my notes. Um, yeah, I don't know if there's anybody else on the commission. I know they're on, but I don't know if they wanna add anything to what I just stated, but I, again, I think this is a really great discussion. I really like the idea of adding the four bullet points that Laura had. I think really clearly defining what's at stake for Batavia and how complicated our situation is, is gonna be, um, a really good talking point for them.
Thanks, Alex. I, Alex, I've put, um, the statement that you were talking about from, uh, Gary's letter up on the screen and that certainly is something that could be added into the verbiage of the, the four points message that I've got. If you guys are supportive of that.
Did you say there was one more one?
This was the one that she identified in her...
Right, but there wasn't one other person that wanted to speak?
Yes, there is.
Thanks, Alex.
Uh, Susan Russo.
Good evening, everyone. I have to say, I started out the evening in a state of great disappointment that has now turned to, um, hope and, uh, a pleasant, uh, turn of events with, going with these four bullet points. I think it is extremely important, if the city is going to make a statement on energy legislation, that it be concise and, uh, to the point. And I think that those four points, um, that were in that email message, uh, do that. I do have, um, one concern with the second bullet point of the first item about businesses leaving, city losing its tax base and things like that. That strikes me as a bit of hair on fire. You have supported none of those speculative statements with data or facts, and I think you could easily move from the first bullet point to the second bullet point without, um, getting into speculative, um, statements that are not supported by facts. And that could even be, you know, go the other way, um, saying that if we were, um, if legislation didn't pass and, um, or if, or if the legislation passed and Batavia, you know, stuck with Prairie State, um, that, that, that businesses who are looking for green energy would not be coming to Batavia and that the costs of legislation, excuse me, the cost of litigation, environmental cleanup, fines, fees, things like that would drive utility costs, um, you know, up significantly. So I, I would, you know, encourage you to drop that particular bullet point. Um, as somebody said tonight, um, the city of Batavia is not going to save the world, that is true, but I think the question is whether Batavia is going to progress with the world or be left in the past. Batavia needs to play a role in the future in a meaningful way to support the transition to renewable energy and the closing of Prairie State. And I think by incorporating these four bullet points into, um, your letter to legislators and the governor will be a step in that direction of meaningful support. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
I would agree with Susan about taking that bullet point out.
I guess my only concern there is, Laura, I'm, I wanna say there's at least twice that we've had businesses interested in moving in Batavia and have decided not to because of the cost of power in the four years I've been here. At least two, I don't know if there's been more. So, we already know we're on that, we're in a place that it's, it's a risk and we've had to consent others...
To stay.
To stay.
And we've had to make allocations for them so that they could get solar power because they were not gonna stay otherwise, too. And we've had businesses come and look at us and want to do solar and leave when they learned they couldn't. So...
Yeah, we're, we're in a, we're in a crummy situation, but I think it is true. Yeah. And residents will leave? I said it last time. I'm at the, I'm at the, I'm at the edge. I'm honestly at the edge.
I like, I like what you said. If we've got data to back it up, let's put it in there, and if not, it sounds kind of inflammatory and, and I, I think it's better that we just lead with the facts.
But if you wanna have bullet points, you don't wanna start putting footnotes and everything else in there. I mean, you just keep it straight and to the point and it's, if they have questions about the bullet points, they know where to go.
And I think, I mean, you could say it better, you were sitting there with Laura. Did she think that that was a valid statement?
Very.
I think that's the reality. I think that's what people think.
Right.
Well, perhaps, um, we could put in, like, verbiage, like, our concern is that businesses will leave. Instead of just like a blanket, this is what, what will happen. You know, this is, as we... You know, this is, as we look at these rates, increased rates are concerned is that businesses will leave or they won't come, you know?
I agree with that.
And I'd like to address that other point about the, the financial assistance because I don't think we, I don't think it's, I don't unfortunately like the way it's stated in that other statement because, yeah, I don't, I don't expect them to write us a check. I want us to be, I'm okay with all this if we're absolved of our responsibilities, basically.
We'll never get a check from them.
Exactly. We're not going to get a check.
They don't pay their bills anyway.
Like I said, they want this legislation in so they can get federal money to fund it. That's the only way this legislation ever works is if federal money funds it. I, I just, I mean, the mayor could, could back me up. I, I just don't see that happening. This legislation cannot be paid for by the state of Illinois on its own. There's no way that can happen. They cannot charge ratepayers in the state enough money to make this happen.
Oh, don't dare them.
Don't dare.
I, I, that was not a dare. That was a statement. My lawyer friend here will back me up. That was a statement of fact.
True.
Somebody wants to debate me on that? Go ahead.
Make sure I don't have any other raised hands.
You got another hand up?
Nope.
Or is that just Peggy has her hand up? See, here comes the financial guru to back me up.
Go ahead, Peggy.
Hello, good evening. I just wanted to make sure that, uh, an email I had sent to Laura earlier, um, that the, on the first bullet point there, it should say sixteen percent, just, no, fifteen's close enough, but it should include all commercial businesses and, and other industrial. That six percent is only, uh, applicable to eight businesses. So I just want to make sure that it's understood that all businesses will also have that same increase except those eight customers.
Well, and if, if it's sixteen by Peggy's numbers, it should be sixteen in the letter.
Yep.
And, and then also state that, you know, like the six percent of higher industrial rates, if that's our eight largest consumers, that's, should be included in there because I think that's an important statement in and of itself because if there's eight of them that are going to take a six percent hit to their bottom line, that's a big number.
It's a huge number.
You know, and, and as far as how it's.
That was all, thank you.
And as far as how it's worded on the first businesses would leave, if we just say we believe businesses will leave, I mean, I think there's enough of us on the council that believe that.
Well, we, we know that.
Yes.
We've been fighting over the last few years with some businesses.
Well, and, and I think this, th- these have to be strong statements if we expect any change in the legislation that they proposed. And if, if we don't have that in there, that never becomes part of their decision making.
I mean, they do it to us, like when they're doing that tax thing. I mean, they were very blunt and said, we're going to raise your taxes if this doesn't pass. I mean, they're, they're, they're very strong. There was nothing passive about it.
Yeah. Well, the only passive thing is when they take more of the LGGF. They don't like to tell us that till they do it.
Okay.
Before we are finished, I mean, I don't want to take us field until I know that part's done, but I need to kind of take us a field.
Anybody else? What else were we looking for?
Okay, um, so I need ten seconds of history lesson. In the period between 2010 and 2015, when we were investigating different options, we had all sorts of legal opinions, but one of those legal opinions was with regards to myself and really any staff member that serves on the NIPA board, um, as a representative of their community. So our legal advisors advised that it's my responsibility as Batavia's NIPA representative to first represent the interests of the city of Batavia over and above the interests of the agency, NIPA. So that's my role is to represent Batavia's interests. And back in that timeframe, there was several votes taken where Batavia made one vote and the other two communities made the other vote. And so, you know, efforts failed back then because of that. Anyways, so that is my role is to represent Batavia's direction. I am now in a position with the retirement of the superintendent from Geneva, I am now in a position where I will be representing the agency at the Prairie State level. And therefore I need to reconcile to make sure that if I'm representing the agency, that that is also consistent with the city of Batavia. And here I come back to where we were talking tonight. I just need to know from city council, if we support the closure of Prairie State by 2030, if all these other things are taken care of, and if that's a true statement, or if it's what happens if all these other things aren't taken care of? Because if all these other things aren't taken care of, do we still have, do we still support the first statement? Do we still want Prairie State to be closed by 2030 if we don't get any other financial relief?
I would say no.
Absolutely not.
No.
Because I don't know how, one, we, our utility stays financially sustainable if that occurs. I, I don't know how else to say that.
I, I think that there, what I hear is that there are a, a minority view on council that we should close it.
Regardless of.
Regardless, but that the majority, and you could take a, a poll if you want to, but that the majority statement is it should not be closed until such date as these financial concerns have been alleviated.
I agree with that statement.
Yeah.
That's the right way to, until they've been alleviated.
Yeah.
Not addressed. Address means yes or no.
Yeah.
Alleviated, they're gone.
Gone.
Do whatever you want to.
Agreed.
Yeah, because even if they can get rid of the purchase power agreement because of our capacity being rolled into the bonds, that's still what, four million a year?
Yes.
So that would be four million that we'd have to add on top of everybody's rates at that point, once the plant's closed.
The only thing I would add is the cost, we've heard a lot of people say they were willing to pay more. Um, I think some people would, but what that more is, it's, it's an unanswered question. Now, that's got to be addressed before we can say yes, we will support this one way or the other. So I know there's still people saying it's got to be alleviated, maybe not 100%, 99%, whatever, you know, there's, there's a, a slide bar there, uh, for an answer, but I guarantee if it costs every homeowner $20,000, nobody's going to say yes, or maybe there will still be two people in the, in the city that will, um, for the point of it. But we, we have to be realistic and say, without knowing the answers, and, and I still even think sixteen percent is, is a, is a estimate, but we, there's still a lot of unknown, um, that we don't even know if that's what it's limited to.
Because we don't even know exactly what the decommissioning costs are going to be, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
And that would be on top of what we're talking about right now.
Correct, yeah. And, and the other thing I'll say to that is we don't even know what decommissioning requirements are going to be. I, I'm sure that with all this legislation, at some point, the federal EPA is going to be part of the discussion on what those requirements are, the decommission, everything, you know, whether it be a gas plant, whether it be a coal plant, whether it be a nuclear plant, those are all going to be regulations that are going to have to come out once they get legislation that says, here's the day you got to shut that down.
We also don't know the opportunities in the future for residential and industrial to provide their own energy, you know? So, um, I know right now we can't put solar panels on our homes and provide our own. But if Prairie State closes, would that open up that opportunity for industrial complexes and homes to start providing their own energy?
We can have solar panels on our own houses.
But we still.
Up to a certain point right now.
Fewer of us can, and then it'll be capped.
Right, then it's capped. So like, what, I was gonna, after, after we talked about this, I was going to ask us to start thinking about when we're done with this discussion, do we start talking about how do we have a program like ComEd does? And again, that's something further down the road.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think that has, that has to come after the legislation goes through because in every one of them I've read, there are components of that, that no matter whether you're investor owned utility or municipal owned utility, you will be allowing that up to a certain point. Am I wrong, Gary, in saying that?
No, you're correct.
It, it's in there. I mean, it, it is truly in there. And I think one of the things that I have always believed is that, you know, as far as solar goes, that's something that at some point is going to be in the building code, that that's going to be part of our building code because we'll be able to take up rooftops rather than fields. You know, we'll, I don't, I don't think, at least in our lifetimes, that we're ever going to get away from having to grow things in fields to feed us. Um, so to me, the more farmland we decide is, has to be turned into solar fields, you know, and with the numbers that Mike has brought up several times of what they've talked about and windmills and solar field square footage, we're going to have to get creative where they go. And I think buildings to me is the one place it belongs.
Yeah, the, the situation that Batavia has is the, if, once we hit that two percent, um, actually whatever people are producing, the rest of Batavia is paying for in the, um, purchase power factor that's added onto your bill for the unused portion of our, um, power sales.
Which is reason number 753 to get rid of Prairie State and the power purchase agreement.
Yeah, and to Leah's point too about opportunities that we're, that we're discounting here, we're also discounting any potential, I mean, with or without CJ, with or without what's going on in the state right now from the federal level or in the future from the state level, full severance taxes, carbon taxes, the decommissioning costs that will end up being on our, on our tax bill, not our tax bill, our rate, um, our, um, jobs transition, all of these things are not factored in. That might be a 20% increase in our rates over the next couple of years. And, and then looking back, we should have gone with a 16% rate increase because if we don't close down Prairie State, those increases are absolutely coming from one angle or another. Those things are coming and those are not factored into our analysis either.
Right, and, and I think just like we saw with, um, wind power when we looked at that, originally wind power was a great deal, was a lot cheaper. And then the subsidies went away and as soon as the subsidies dried up, wind power became a lot more expensive. And now as it's changed again and the costs have come down to generate from it, it will be a better deal. And the same with solar.
Well, same with coal. So the subsidies for coal are now going away and we are going to be held responsible for all of the externalized costs that we have not been paying for 200 years. The environmental justice wave that's coming through is not going to be stopped. We are going to be paying for the damage that coal has done over the past 20 years, 200 years, like that's coming. Um, those subsidies have gone away too, so.
And I think the, the request in this, in this letter is for those costs to be borne equally among the ratepayers in Illinois and not to have Batavia suffer compared to neighboring communities because it's just, like, you know, people make choices about where to locate their companies based on, you know, the, the, uh, their ra- their rate of profit. And sometimes that's taken into consideration. I know that some larger corporations who are here in Batavia have contacted us because their consumers are demanding to know how they're contributing to the green movement. You know, and so they do make changes and, and they add solar and, and they do things of that nature. But at the same time, um, the, the manufacturers and, and those who, uh, electric is a component, a large component of their, the cost of their products, this will make a difference.
I have a question about our discussion and the use of the Zoom meeting. There's people in the audience have been going into the chat, making statements. Are we capturing those statements that are made and into the minutes of our meetings?
They're part of the recording of the meeting.
Part of the recording?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But can we see them in the recording?
Yeah, because sometimes we don't get to see those. Sometimes I see them flash up and by the time I wheel around to see it, I don't see it.
We can't, when we watch the recording, we can't click on the chat and see what somebody said. There's a preview that pops up, but there's no, you don't see the full message.
Yeah, I mean, Bill, Bill Scound just said something about the decommission.
There, there was something about decommissioning on that.
Can you pull up the chat just to have that on the, maybe we should do that after we're done with the meeting? Pull the chat up and at least re, be able to read through it or have it on the screen for a certain amount of time, just so that it gets captured for the record.
Maybe Jenny can add those to the end of the minutes for the meeting or something?
Yeah. Or if they're on the screen, they can freeze the screen and, and, can you do that? Laura, can you pull those up?
I don't know how to broadcast the chat.
I think you just click on.
I think you click on it, I think it comes up because I think we've had it up before here.
Yeah, we should.
So.
Down at the bottom where they're ready, red circle.
But then I think this will only get, uh, I, I'm not sure if this is a.
There you go.
Yeah, and then you can scroll through it.
I know we had to do that when we were looking for something before.
There we go.
And again, I think that that carbon fee is proposed but hasn't been adopted yet. So we don't even, even know if that's true.
And, and we would propose to, um, have the same type of meetings with our federal legislators that we are having with our state legislators to, uh, seek relief from those.
And now it says we have one new message as well.
There we go. See?
Thanks, Jenny.
We can make this work. It's a learning experience.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments? If not, I want to thank everybody again tonight. I think this has been really another good discussion, another good thing where we've kind of kept trying to funnel down our thoughts to get them to one spot and something that we really need to make sure we have a clear concise picture that goes to the legislators we want it to go to. And then I would suggest that everybody, especially new people, go through, find the, the emails, calls, however you want to do it, contact the local legislators. If you want to look up the bills that are there that are proposed, CJ, it's pretty simple, easy to find, um, you know, go through if you want to contact a few of those, do that. That way everybody gets their hand into the, the Springfield mess and, and gets to experience that. And I think it's really good that, you know, we try to show as united a front as we can to the state legislator that, you know, these are things that we need help with. And that we agree with moving to renewable energy because I think, you know, that's something that, you know, even as soon as we were in the deal with Prairie State, we looked at adding wind power to it at that point. That was right when we were really understanding that we had overbought already and there was no way out of it. And that the wind power at that point was not going to be a good deal for us. Okay, any more new messages? Next up is Project Fatis.
Okay, I've got, uh, just a couple of things. Um, we do have an upcoming joint meeting with the Park District Board again on May 18th, and this would be for our consultant Hitchcock Design Group to provide both councils with an update on the, um, project to create a master plan for the Batavia corridor of the Fox River. Um, they have completed their, um, phase of initial input from the community, both from the community survey, and then they, uh, they received about 500 responses to the community survey and they conducted, I think about 25, um, uh, members of the community in focus groups and asked them specific questions. And so they wanted to, um, share their findings with you as they move on to the, uh, next phase, which would be to generate, um, some proposals for what type of direction we might take with regard to the future development of the riverfront. We have made an offer and it has been accepted by our, uh, candidate for Economic Development Manager. So we're just, um, dotting our i's. So we're just, um, dotting our i's and crossing our t's, and we hope to be able to introduce you to that individual at, um, our next meeting as well. Um, we have our slowdown campaign going right now. One of our strategic plan goals is traffic calming, and this has been a successful campaign in the past. Um, we have printed up two hundred additional signs, in case people don't have their signs from previous campaigns, they can come down to City Hall and request those signs for free, or come and pick up a few of them for you and your neighbors, if you want to be the, the, uh, neighborhood, person responsible for that. And we just ask that, when you put those signs in, that you put them on the house side of your sidewalk, uh, rather than in the parkway, because we certainly don't want to be creating any obstructions for drivers by putting them in the, the parkway, that's the, the reason for that. Um, we are having some NICOR work that's being done out here on Island Avenue. Um, they have been trying to work most days only between the hours of nine AM and two PM to, um, try to avoid being in the, the biggest traffic periods there on Wilson Street and, and, uh, where people are going around. But the work is about to get a little messier. Um, you may have noticed some big orange barricades that went up here on the corner of Island and Houston Street, and that, uh, brickwork will need to be removed, and the, uh, main that they are joining their work to is under the concrete there. And so, over the course of the next, uh, two weeks, they'll be finishing their work by connecting to the mains, both here at Houston Street and also mid-block at Shumway. It will be the, the connections that they need to make, and then they'll come in and, and, uh, Geneva Construction will come to do all of the restoration work, and hopefully everything will be back to normal and good as new. Um, Bicycle Safety Week is May, the week of May seventeenth. And, um, I just wanted to point out that our bicycle commission has been, um, putting, doing a fantastic campaign of education for both motorists and bicyclists about, um, road safety and, um, being conscious of one another and understanding what the rights and responsibilities are for both motorists and bicyclists, um, as they both share the road. And so the, you can see that at the Bicycle Commission's Facebook page, and then we are also sharing that on the city's social media as well. Wanted to alert you to important discussion that we have coming up on our May twenty-fifth Committee of the Whole Meeting. We'd like to have a discussion with all of you about our current grant programs. Um, these grant programs have been in place for, uh, several years now. Um, we are, uh, getting to the point now where we are, uh, receiving some, um, I will say, we're, we're getting some unique situations that we want to present to council for your policy decision on how you would like to, uh, handle those grant requests in the future. And just make sure that we're accomplishing the goals that those grant programs were put in place to satisfy. Um, in the month of June, Peggy is going to be coming to a Committee of the Whole Meeting. Just to do, uh, sort of an overview, given that last year was such an unusual, uh, financial year for the, the city, just to give you sort of a wrap-up on where things ended up, um, with regard to, you know, our anticipated shortfalls that we expected in revenues, and, you know, we've, we've had our receipts come in from even, you know, the last quarter of last year. And then also sort of looking at, um, the health of our reserves and, um, and, and kind of setting the financial table for that discussion that we want to have in July, which, um, Gary will, will help us by facilitating a discussion of the future, um, financing of some of the larger capital projects that we have on the horizon, such as, um, you know, the, uh, the projects that we have for Carriage Crest and for Mahoney Creek, and that we've got, you know, several others of that nature, that we want to make sure that we are, are planning for the future. Um, not to mention the projects that will surely come from the, uh, Master River Plan as well. So we want to talk about how we budget for those things in the future. And that is what I have for Project Status, um, unless anybody has any questions about particular projects for me? Alderman, you're?
Not specifically about a project, but is there going to soon be somewhere on the east side that people can buy garbage stickers?
We are actively working on that.
Yes.
That's a, that's a topic we receive inquiries on almost daily.
Thank you.
We have not been, I mean, I'll just say it, we haven't been overly pleased with Advanced Disposal and Now Waste Management's response. They, they, we have been pressuring them, uh, but they have been slow to respond.
Don't suppose there's anything contractual that we can hold them to on that?
Well, actually, it is in the contract.
It is.
So, that's why we're-
To be able to have things on both sides of the river, okay.
Yeah, you have multiple outlets to purchase them at.
Yes.
Well, there, there are multiple outlets, there's just none on the east side right now.
Right, so.
Right.
You know, and I-
I wasn't sure if it was that specific in the language of the contract.
And if it's, they can't find places to sell them at, then we might have to take a little field trip and walk around to a couple of businesses and talk to some business managers and owners about selling stickers.
Right. Absolutely. We know how important that is. Any other questions? Thank you.
Or come up with a vending machine to be down here at City Hall where you just walk up, put your money in, and they'd spit them out.
That's still the west side.
Yeah, centrally located.
It's like the vending store.
Centrally located area of the city of Batavia.
I mean, they could put it at my house.
Okay, does anybody else have any others? If not, um, we need a motion to go into executive session. And because there are two different Zoom meetings, that would end the regular session Zoom meeting, and then we'll have an executive session. And we would come back and actually adjourn the meeting in the, the second one, but there will be no action afterwards, so. Have a motion for executive session?
Motion for executive session.
Seconded.
Nah, seconded by Miller. And, for the record, this executive session is setting the land of price for sale, or, setting the price of land for sale. And can I get a roll call, please?
Nah?
Aye.
Chantet? Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Jerome?
Aye.
Vogel Singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
And Beck?
Aye.
Motion carried, fourteen to zero, I mean, thirteen to zero.
All right, thank you.
All right, see you in the next meeting.